Good evening. Welcome to the October 30th meeting of the Berkeley School Board. If you want to follow along on our online agenda, the agenda is posted on the district website. We have received comments about reparations in the Literacy Action Quarter Report. The reparations item will be coming to a future board meeting and the Literacy Action Report will continue to be agendized as informational because tonight we are having our annual data presentation, which will include our literacy data, and the Board of Education will be engaged in discussion about the literacy progress of our students alongside progress in math. Mr. Ellis will return in January with a literacy monitoring report, which will be agendized as a discussion item for that meeting. I'm now calling the meeting to order at 7:26 PM. Ms. Chires, will you please call the official roll for this evening's meeting?
Director Laura Babbitt. Here. Director Jennifer Shinoski will be joining us remotely this evening. Student Director Winter.
Here.
Director Mike Chang.
Here.
Vice President Kadija Brown.
Present.
President Anna Vasudev.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Chires. We will now approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. Colleagues, is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
I move to do so.
Is there a second? I can second. So it was moved by Director Chang, seconded by President Vasudev. All directors in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Because Director Shinoski is online, you'll need to do a roll call vote of each board member.
Got it. Ms. Chires, can you please call the roll?
That's right. Director Shinoski?
Yes.
Director Babbitt?
Yes.
Director Clark?
Yes.
Director Chang? Vice President Brown?
Yes.
Presidenta Vasudev?
Yes. Great. Thank you, Ms. Chires. We will now report from our closed session. Vice President Brown, can you please report out on this evening's closed session?
Good evening, everyone.
As well as the closed session from October 9th.
Good evening, everyone. I will report out from closed session and I'll first begin with item 3.4 from the October 9th meeting. As you remember, the board went back for closed session and so for item 3.4, the board heard an update and provided direction. For this evening's closed session, for item 3.1, the board heard an update and provided direction. For item 3.2.1, the board heard an update and provided direction. For item 3.2.2, it was moved by Director Babbitt, seconded by Director Chang, and all board directors voted in favor. For item 3.3, the board heard an update and provided direction. For item 3.4, it was moved to table by Director Babbitt and seconded by Director Chang, and all board directors voted in favor. And finally, for item 3.5, the board heard an update and provided direction. And this is the report out from closed session.
Thank you, Vice President Brown. Now we'll hear from our superintendent, Anika Ford-Morthell.
Good evening, BUSD family. Y'all been out of practice. Good evening, BUSD family. So at our last board meeting, I announced that the month of October, BUSD joins many around the country in recognizing Filipino XO History Month as well as LGBTQ+ Month. As this month comes to a close, we commit to continue to honor and celebrate the contributions, richness, and histories of both of these and all of the diverse groups that make up our student body. And on this night, October 30th, I am proud to say on behalf of myself, my Board of Directors, and the educators and staff of BUSD, that we are even more resolved in our recognition and support of our transgender and gender expansive babies. I call your-- I call all of your attention to Resolution 25-011 on tonight's consent agenda reaffirming support for transgender and gender expansive children and youth. We bring this important resolution forth, recognizing an alarming attack on trans people across the country and our need as a district and a nation to do better. This resolution ensures that the district affirms, supports, and values the gender identities and gender expressions of all of our students, and will continue to further efforts in our schools to create welcoming, safe, and inclusive learning environments for our schools and for the babies that are in them, inclusive of our transgender, non-binary, and all LGBTQ+ students. We have work to do, much work to do, but we believe that this resolution is a step in the right direction, and quite honestly, this resolution is a big deal. In the spirit of Berkeley Together, I must also know that this resolution was a collaborative effort, but most excitingly, this was the result of the advocacy, allyship, and voice of our very own BUSD students. I especially want to-- many of them are in the room this evening, should I say that too? I especially want to thank our babies, our students, who've advocated and spent countless hours at board meetings, calling us up and out to do more and better. Some of them are in the room tonight, as I said, right over there in that corner. This is indeed a resolution for our babies and by our babies. And while this is to honor them and their hard work, I want to especially call out our former student, James, who actually was one of the first to get up and again, call us up and call us out for this very important work. So, super excited to be the superintendent of BUSD at district who has set out a resolution in support of our students. Speaking of student voice, we are proud to be one of two cities that allow youth ages 16 to 17 years old to vote for Board of Education Directors. This newly earned right, the civic responsibility, has been eight years in the making, and it is about perseverance, because we took a long time to get here, but we are finally here. As of my last update, well over 500 of our BUSD students have registered to vote, and some of them have already voted. They're not done yet. They have been working to get students registered, doing press interviews, and even held a candidate forum at BHS. We also know that processing the results of an election can evoke a range of feelings for our students, just as it can for adults. We want everyone in the room to know, and those who are listening, that we are prepared to support our students post-election, process whatever feelings they have, particularly our babies who, for the first time, are being able to exercise their voice in this new way. I'm not sure if there's any families from Sylvia Mendez in the room. Well, I'm talking to you. We have exercised much care and attention to ensure the safety of our students, staff, and community members, and minimized disruption of instruction during the construction at Sylvia Mendez. I was actually at Mendez earlier this weekend, was really proud to see teaching and learning still happening across the grade levels. Yet yesterday, we were made aware of a subcontractor ignoring additional mitigation protocols that we put into place, and that was really upsetting, and we have taken action. I want to make sure that folks who are listening, and the Sylvia Mendez family member who was in the room, knows that we take the safety of our students and our staff very seriously, and we had taken many steps to ensure the safety protocols were in place beyond what was required. A team is actively investigating this matter as I speak, and out of an abundance of caution, the district has directed all construction to cease at the end of today. It's ceased now, because the day is over. And this will allow us time to review the plans and protocols to ensure that they are effective and reevaluate our contractor's safety plans, procedures, and supervision practices. More information to come to the Mendez family, but wanted to-- I anticipated more of you to be here, so I wanted to make sure you heard that important message. We will have more information, again, and communication forthcoming as early as tomorrow. Now, back to tonight. Tonight, I'm excited that you all are here. I actually want to count how many of you all are here, so I can make sure that that exact number is here at the end of this night, because we have some exciting topics on the agenda this evening, most notably, aside from the resolution that I just announced, we are going to be sharing out our spring data from the BIG State Assessment, and we have some good news to share, as well as some good a-hahs around the work that we still need to do. So, because we are a school district and our whole entire purpose is teaching and learning, we hope that you stay around to hear what we've been doing in service of teaching and learning and the ways it's been impacting our students to date. President, that is the end of my comments.
Thank you, Superintendent. And with that, we'll move on to our public comments. And before we begin, I'd like to remind you of our decorum expectations during this in all parts of tonight's meeting. No person shall disturb the order of this meeting. Such behavior includes, but is not limited to booing, hissing, creating or participating in any physical disturbance, or speaking out of turn in violation of applicable rules, preventing or attempting to prevent others who have the floor from speaking, preventing others from observing the meeting, entering into or remaining in the area of the meeting room that is not open to the public, or approaching the dais without permission. As Ms. Chires has already explained, there are two opportunities for public comments at each meeting, now and at the end of the meeting. If you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, we encourage you to stay and speak at the end of the meeting. You can also email us your comments at boardofed@berkeley.net. The board does not respond directly to comments or questions made during public comment. However, board members, the superintendent, and staff do take notes during public comment and may follow up with the speakers after the meeting. These are hybrid meetings, so we have public commenters in the boardroom and online. We have designated 20 minutes to our in-person speakers. This will be followed by 10 minutes to our online speakers. Anyone online who wishes to make public comment should raise their virtual hand now, so Ms. Chires can organize. And if you're a student online and will speak, can you please add student next to your name so we prioritize you? Each public speaker will have two minutes to speak tonight, depending on the amount of speakers. Please note that the microphone will shut off at the end of each speaker's allotted time, so time your comments accordingly. All right, and I'll call you in the names I've received in order from our board secretary. And if you could approach the dais, that would be great. So the first speaker is Susanna Stats, followed by Carol Park.
Hello. Thanks for having-- thanks for your open remarks. That's exactly why I'm here today. I want to start with some deep gratitude, Jennifer especially to you. I'm sorry you can't be here with us in person on this resolution that we're honoring this evening. I also want to get a little sobered on some of the work still to do. I'm sharing some remarks from a parent who can't be here tonight. She shared it with me. It's actually, I think, in your inbox as well, but I'm going to share it with you here today. Hi, board members. I'm writing to support the resolution reaffirming support for trans students. I'm a parent of a non-binary first grader at Oxford. A few weeks ago, my child walked into the boys' bathroom while wearing a dress and was confronted by another student who said, "You're a girl. You can't be in here." My child stood up for themselves with the help of a third supportive child and made it into a stall, but the other child banged on the stall door the whole time. The principal was quick to respond to my email and schedule a meeting. She's very supportive, but somewhat naive about how best to support us. It turns out there is an all-gender bathroom, but since it's not labeled, my child thought it was not for them to use, and the principal thought the sign was universal, but it isn't. What we've learned is there is still need for adult education in this system, and adults need a lot more training and support in order to do right by our trans kids. The benefit extends well beyond our own students, since folks outside the district look to us to set examples. Put one way, well-meaning districts will struggle to support their trans students if others can point the way. We fall short in Berkeley. Put another way, if a student in Berkeley has what my child called "a weird thing happen" in the bathroom, students in other parts of the country don't survive these sorts of bathroom incidents. Sincerely grateful to be raising my kids in Berkeley where we get to discuss how best to support our trans students, so thank you on behalf of a parent who can't be here tonight.
Next, we will call Carol Park, followed by Elizabeth Becker.
Hi, good evening. I am the lone Sylvia Mendez person in the room, but I think a lot of people are dialing in tonight. I've been a Sylvia Mendez parent for over 80 years. I have a daughter who's in eighth grade at Willard, and two current students in first and fifth grade. About a year ago today, actually, I attended the committee meeting where Mr. Kalis laid out the options for the interim housing plan, the one that all of you subsequently voted in favor of later. In the meeting, several Sylvia Mendez community members, some with extensive subject matter expertise in construction and safety, raised questions specific to construction, dust, noise, runoff, all things that could be harmful to the students and staff. Your responses, Mr. Kalis, reassured us at the time that the "safety," quote-unquote, "the safety of our students, staff, and community comes first," and that, quote-unquote, "BUSD ensures OSHA guidance is not only followed, but is exceeded," and those concerns would not happen at all. On the contrary, as the superintendent noted, since students and staff have been on campus this year, there have been several incidents, not just yesterday, but several that have been reported to Mr. Kalis and to this board, where demolitions occurring with visible silica dust, plumes blowing into the school area where students are playing and studying. This dust can cause cancer, COPD, kidney disease. It can be fatal. It's very dangerous. An example was used last year about the Eight-Wing work happening in the community theater, that there were zero issues with the release of dust or silica. That also, again, made us feel really comfortable about what was going to happen. But lots of things have happened repeatedly, all parent-reported, and without any real proactive communication or anything until today. So, like, noise has also been excessive and so loud outdoors that students and staff are wearing ear protection on campus, going home with headaches. Some teachers are actually asking permission for parents to allow students to be removed from campus during the day for study, like, to different parks so they can avoid the noise. I'll email the rest of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Elizabeth Becker, followed by Lindsay Nofelt.
Hello. I'm here to discuss something that's basically the same situation. I'm a parent of children at Longfellow and John Muir, and as you all know, the Longfellow students are at the Berkeley Adult School, which is set to start building a high-rise, which will be 70 feet from the current building when it's completed. And I have yet to hear any sort of plan of how you're going to mitigate these effects on the students. This is a dilapidated building already. It was scheduled for fire life, safety, ventilation, and window replacement. None of that's happening while the students are in there. So, and they're in this broken-down building. They have to walk three blocks to go to PE across San Pablo, which is going to be right next to the construction site, and we have heard nothing from the board about how you're going to protect our kids. Like, I'm worried, and it is going to affect the way that I vote, like, for board seats coming up and in the future. Like, you can't be silent on this. You have to tell us how you're going to protect our kids. Like, I totally stand by this. I have two non-binary girls-- I-- or children, and protecting the kids should be the top priority. I'm not trying to, like, nerf this housing project. It is important, but we can't push this forward without addressing the needs of the students first, and I need to hear a plan. I need to see a plan. I also work in the industry. I know what's at risk. I'm OSHA 10 certified. Most of these job sites, you have to be at least OSHA 40 certified. It's going to be chaos. Please, tell us how you're going to protect my kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nofelt.
Hi. My name is Lindsay Nofelt, and I'm speaking as a member of Reading for Berkeley. This is a comment on the most recent progress report on the Literacy Improvement Plan. The progress report claims that all tasks are on track, but that doesn't live-- that doesn't match with our lived experiences as parents of kids in elementary and middle school. Instead, it feels like this is a year of limbo. Especially in middle school, we're far behind our goals to reach all students. Methodology to support reading, spelling, and writing in middle school classrooms has been updated to on-track in this report, but nothing really has changed for our kids. There's no new resources and not really much training. We could be providing all teachers evidence-based ways to power up their existing routines, or even looking for a comprehensive curriculum instead of what we're using now, which is a theory, and filling up the gaps that we know exist because of TCRWP. Instead, we have assurances that things have changed or will change, but we don't have any proof. It doesn't exist in the literacy report. And despite effort, the district continues to struggle to provide students and teachers what is required to move past this litigation at the close of the year. Let's make 2024, 25 into a year where BUSD works to make a difference with the students already upstream in middle school. This will require leaning on the expertise of others, asking for help, and being humble enough to accept it when offered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nofelt. We will now move on to our public commenters online. Let me see. Ms. Chires, I only see two hands raised.
Yeah, and Linda is going to speak during the committee comments, so there's only one.
Ms. Gaden is going to speak during committee comments? Is that correct? Okay, so then there's only one speaker, the parents for public schools. I believe it's Vanessa Madero. Okay. All right, so I see one hand raised. Correct. And we'll start with Vanessa Madero, and each commenter will have two minutes. And again, the mic will shut off after you allot a time.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Presidente. My name is Vanessa. I am the executive director of Parents Public Schools, and I am here in my official capacity about our young people with disabilities. There are concerns about young people with disabilities from an achievement standpoint. If you look at the 2023 data from Longfellow, you'll see that these students are in the red, which is the lowest category they can be. And then if you hear, and I'm sure you guys are hearing, concerns from parents related to the implementation of accommodations, I just want to remind the board that implementing accommodations is not optional. This is a requirement under IDEA, and it is extremely important for you all to think about how you're going to do that if you are facing any staffing challenges. Our organization is willing to work with you. However, there are parents in the Berkeley community who are super concerned and have reached out to parents of public schools on this issue. Thank you for hearing from me.
Thank you very much. Now we will move on to committee comments. Ms. Chires, are there any committees here tonight? G-Shaq. So we'll start with G-Shaq, who's here in person, and you'll have five minutes. Did they raise their hand, the student? Would you mind if we gave the student a chance to comment? And then we will move on to G-Shaq. All right. I did not see-- Joaquin Martinez. Okay, we will call on Joaquin Martinez, and then to G-Shaq. Okay, Joaquin Martinez, if you would like to speak. Did you message the student, Ms. Chires? Well, we can move on to G-Shaq, and then if the student does want to speak, let me know, and after committee comments, we can let him speak. All right, G-Shaq.
Hello once again, school board. My name is October, and I want to begin by expressing my heartfelt gratitude for this resolution in support of trans students. Today, I'd like to share a piece of my journey with you. Berkeley Unified has never been a place of indifference for me. From the day I walked into Willard Middle School, I was welcomed by teachers and staff who made it clear that they cared deeply. They didn't just teach me, they helped raise me, guiding me through my coming out as trans and shaping the person I am today. From Ms. Arthur, who led Willard's GASSA, to Haley O'Brien, my growing leaders teacher, and now my wonderful boss, I was constantly encouraged to self-advocate and demand equal treatment in a world that often feels harsh towards young trans people. When I went to Berkeley High, that self-advocacy became more essential than I ever imagined. Within my first month, I joined AGES, and the support from BUSD never wavered. The doors of every teacher I had freshman year were open. Ms. Ponabianco, my English teacher, offered endless emotional support, and Ms. Gentile, my Ethnic Studies teacher, created the learning environment I still hold dear. I spent countless hours in Ms. P.'s room, talking with her and Ms. Gentile, thinking, "I have a community that truly cares." Last year, I stood before you many times, as I'm sure you remember, surrounded by passionate peers, students deeply dedicated to improving our community. I was scared that my voice alone couldn't drive change across an entire district, so once again, I looked to my teachers and staff, who have always been by my side. Mr. Aguilera, my comparative values and beliefs teacher, listened to my rants on district policies and locked bathroom doors every day. His classroom remains a safe space. Yasmina constantly continues to collaborate with me on poster designs and next steps. Her office is a constant hub of welcome to and supported students. Ms. Jennifer Shinoski made it a point to come to Berkeley High and hear students' voices today, while our superintendent pushes for change alongside us. My point is this: We are a district of progress, a district defined by resilience, compassion, and action. Even in tough times, our community, students and staff alike, rallies together. While the national political landscape becomes increasingly uncertain, and frankly terrifying, I find comfort in knowing that Berkeley Unified stands firm in its commitment to protecting its students. But while this resolution marks significant progress, we are not perfect. I stand by my peers advocating for better, more inclusive education. I stand with every student group engaged in the slow, often grueling work of change, navigating district codes, meeting during precious free hours, and staying up late to improve our schools at our city. Let this resolution serve as a reminder. Progress is possible, it is worth the effort, and we can and we must do better. Thank you, school board, for this resolution of continued progress. Thank you to G-Shaq, to GISA, AGES, Gaia, and every other organization and individual who worked to make this a reality. And thank you to every member of our community, staff, parents, students, and teachers and allies, who make me believe in a district of love. I know we will continue to rise.
Can I-- can I grab those last two minutes? Is that okay? Okay. That was beautiful, October. Thank you. This is a very inspiring day, and I'm Rebecca Levinson. I am the co-chair of the Gender Equity Sexual Harassment Advisory Committee, and I was here at the last board meeting talking about the $13 million settlement. I don't know if you know this, but Rachel Phillips was my oldest son's babysitter. This has a whole lot of personal pull for me. And I got a phone call today from a student who had been sexually harmed. And I am sitting here in this moment and wondering about change, and wondering if we can really make it happen. What if we were a school district that said, "It is more important to imbue values around leadership and care in our athletes than anything else"? What if we were to, in fact, make leaders as athletes? So it's inclusive. I say to my friend Yasmina over there. But leaders as athletes, what we stand for, what we expect. Our coaches come from bastions of toxic masculinity themselves. The wonderful thing about training those coaches is they can see themselves in the story. They can make those differences with their young athletes. And I'll tell you what, those athletes at our school, they're gods. And if we could help shift the narrative around the upstander ship, we could really, really, really make a difference in culture in our school district. So, let's make it happen this year. Thank you. And Ms. Chires, we have one more committee right online.
It looks like student Joaquin Martinez just raised their hand again. You want to give--
Oh, yes, we can give the student a chance to speak.
Okay, they're not coming on. We'll move on. We'll move on. Linda Gaden, on behalf of the African-American success.
Okay, we'll move on to Ms. Gaden. I think Ms. Chires tried to promote the student again, but he was unable to. Any thoughts? Ms. Gaden?
Good evening. Board of Directors, Superintendent, and members of the Berkeley community. My name is Linda Gaden, and I'm the executive director of Biotech Partners, and I serve as a member-- and I serve as a member of the BUSD African-American Success Committee and one of the delightful partners to this effort. I am here tonight to provide a brief update on behalf of the BUSD African-American Success Committee and Biotech Partners. The African-American Success Committee met virtually on October 23 to brainstorm about ways to increase our increase to the communities we serve. We look forward to sharing our ideas at an upcoming Board of Education meeting. Some of the ways that we think it's important for the African-American Success Committee to be representative of the diverse views of African-American parents in the district include town halls, focus groups, and community events. We look forward to your support and leadership as we move these ideas to implementation. Finally, the African-American Success Committee will meet on November 13 to continue its work and build connections with other BUSD advisory committees. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gaden. And is that it for committee comments, Ms. Chares? Great, now we have time for union comments. Are there any labor partners in the room to make comment tonight? Do we have any virtual comments, Ms. Chares? All right, saying none, now we will move on to board member comments. Thank you again for all of you who came out to speak to us. We're going to hear now from my board colleagues. And before we start board member comments tonight, I'd like to remind our colleagues to review our governance team agreements. The full list of our governance team agreements can be found in our board meeting agendas. Let's be the best role models that we can for our students. And with that, I'll turn it over to my colleagues for their comments tonight. Who would like to go first? Director Shonowski, you raise your hand first, so we're going to unmute you first.
I just have one quick comment. I just, I want to take a moment to thank especially October and others who are there tonight. I wish I was there with you celebrating, but really, without your advocacy, none of this would have happened. And so I'm so grateful to your work. I hope you keep your voice and keep speaking up and speaking out and making us all do better all the time. And I'm really honored to be part of this resolution and part of the work. And I also want to acknowledge Yasmina, who was, without Yasmina, I'm like, put the camera on Yasmina, please. Let's embarrass her, too. Without Yasmina, this resolution would not be. She's not gonna, keep going, camera. Without Yasmina, this resolution would not be. And so I would just really want to give her that shout out. So thank you all for being here, and I hope you have an extra cupcake, and the board members don't eat them all.
Well, thank you, Director Shonowski. I agree, we all love Yasmina. And there's the camera right on Yasmina. Colleagues, who else would like to follow up from Director Shonowski?
All right, I guess I'll go next.
Director Cheng.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everybody. So nice to see everyone. Thank you, everyone who has spoken again, for bringing your thoughts and directing us to your concerns and recommendations on behalf of programs and services for our students. I'm so pleased that Resolution 25011 reaffirming support for transgender and gender expansive children and youth is on consent today. Consent items are often viewed as pro forma items, but I know that rights for LGBTQ youth has traveled great distances in time. Thank you, students, families, staff, teachers, administrators, and board colleagues on the work to get to this important rights-based resolution. And again, the students who are involved on this are really the drivers behind this and working with their families and great staff. And lots of people have remarked upon Yasmina's critical role, not just in terms of direction and coordination, but on a daily basis, providing a safe space in her office at BHS, which I've heard lots about. Yes, thank you so much. I also want to give a shout out, I have to make a dad joke here, on our consent calendar also, which is often pro forma. If you look on the consent calendar at 12.9, I want to make a shout out to the brand marketing genius behind Honey Bucket Services, also known as portable toilets. Now they're known as honey buckets. Very, very smart. So pleased to be engaged with G-Shaq as well and support their important work. I look forward to working closely with them this year, putting forth some of my subject matter experience in this area, and hopefully I'll be helpful there. I've been keeping busy with lots of other folks, chairing the Policy Subcommittee with our great staff and administrators, including the superintendent and Yasmina again, who is everywhere all at once somehow. She's been super helpful on the Policy Subcommittee, and President Vassaddeau also, who served with me. I want to reflect that policy often seems super boring. We don't often have public commenters. I just want you to consider coming to public comment. Almost never do we have public commenters. That's an opportunity for you to give some feedback on your perspective on very important policies and procedures that impact your programs and services. So just since our last school board meeting, for example, policy has scrutinized and hustled through, because we're really working to revise lots of policies and procedures, some of which are decades old, from what I recall. Title IX, cell phones, advanced math, attendance, and graduation, just in the last couple of weeks since we last met. So please continue to check our agenda, and please feel free to drop in for a public comment if you have an interest on the item. Thanks again, everybody, for your efforts, students, families, and staff, teachers, and fellow board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cheng. Who'd like to go next? Yes, Student Director Clark.
Good evening, everybody. It's been super lovely seeing my fellow classmates here today and hearing them speak. I want to begin by highlighting something truly monumental for our community: the recent resolution supporting transgender and gender expansive youth in Berkeley Unified. I'm so proud of the students who advocated for this change and grateful to see our district formally recognize and uphold the rights of every student. This resolution is a major step forward in ensuring that all students, regardless of gender identity or expression, have access to safe, equitable, and affirming facilities, including restrooms and locker rooms that align with their gender identity. It's a strong move towards making our school a welcoming space for transgender, non-binary, and all LGBTQ students. But let's be clear: Our commitment to gender-neutral language and anti-discrimination practices is only a starting point. Building true culture of acceptance requires continuous effort, collaboration, and feedback from students, families, and our community. Also, on another note, with Election Day coming up next Tuesday, I wanted to highlight how important it is, especially for youth voters, to make sure our voices are heard. In Berkeley, youth voters have a lot of power, and by filling out our ballot, we are directly shaping a more inclusive and forward-thinking future. And so for those of you who have received your ballots, please remember to fill them out thoughtfully. You can turn them by mail or drop them off in one of the official drop boxes around town. There's also a Dropbox right across from Berkeley High. And if you need any guidance, bulletin emails have resources to help. This is for Berkeley High students. Overall, let's keep pushing for a school environment where every student feels safe, valued, and supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Director Clark. Who would like to go next? Director Babett.
Yes, I'd love to go after Student Director Clark, primarily because I can't say anything that you said any better. So I echo all of her comments, especially regarding our change in the bathroom, hoping that everyone takes this opportunity to vote and making sure that we have our resolution and making sure that we have a safe, welcoming environment for all of our students. Since our last board meeting, we lost another member of our community. His name was Monte Roberts. He was a treasure to the Berkeley community. He was a role model and a mentor to more young people than I could ever name, including his own son, Monte Jr. His presence made a huge impact for students, teachers, and the entire community at Washington Elementary, where he was nearly a daily fixture on the playground and in the classrooms, as well as the camp that he ran called Park Hoppers. He was a Berkeley High School graduate and basketball standout. He passed away earlier this month, and whether you knew him or not, his passing is a loss for the Berkeley community. We will forever remember his beaming smile and warm hug whenever we think of him. You can send donations in his honor via the GoFundMe page under Monte Roberts Sr. I also want to announce and save the date for the Berkeley Public Schools Fund. It will be Friday, December 6, where they will have their Impact Showcase at St. John's Church. This year, they will be honoring and showcasing educator innovators from all across our programs, including grantees, STEM educators, key partners, and teachers who host classroom volunteers. Finally, I want to say thank you to the Sylvia Mendez and Longfellow families for remaining diligent to ensure that we are aware of the construction issues. It does take time to address them, and I appreciate your partnership. Parents have always been willing to lend their expertise, and BUSD, we have to do a better job about offering greater transparency and opening our hands to truly receive parent and caretaker inclusion going forward. Let's do our part to ensure Berkeley Together includes collaboration and partnership with our families, who offer their expertise freely and to support their kids, as well as the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Babett. Vice President Brown? No comments tonight? Okay. I have just a couple of comments. I'll try to be brief tonight. I just want to say that I also echo my colleague's excitement for passing our resolution reaffirming support for transgender and gender expansive children and youth. In the spirit of tonight's resolution, I'd also like to highlight the work of the board's Policy Subcommittee, which I serve on along with Director Cheng, and who is, we're also joined by the wonderful Yasmina, as we're working tirelessly to update over 15 policies and regulations to incorporate new Title IX regulations, which now, for the first time, explicitly prevents harassment based on gender and gender expression in our schools. So I just want you to know that the important work of the resolution is also tied to our policy work and that we are moving a lot of these policies forward, because that's how we can really create long-term change. So thank you for your advocacy. Additionally, tonight's regulation on the Williams Complaints includes the district's obligation to provide at least one gender-neutral facility at each one of our school sites. So I wanted to point that out. That's on the agenda for tonight. And next up from the Board Policy Subcommittee, please expect to see updates on our policies governing math and literacy instruction. And again, we welcome people to come and to give us public comment. I also share Director Babett's appreciation for the Mendez and Longfellow communities that came out to give public comment. I know that I met with the Sylvia Mendez family, so I wanted to appreciate your advocacy. And please know that after that meeting, I also followed up with our superintendent. We'll be following up with Director Calice, and so we'll be circling back with the community. But I do thank you for your advocacy and for bringing up some of those really important topics during our conversation last Friday. Appreciate you making the time for that. And that concludes my board update. I'm very excited to dig into our data tonight. I don't know who else is really jazzed up. I'm going to ask for a round of applause for that, because that's what I'm really excited about tonight. Didn't get that many applauses. But no. That, you know, monitoring the progress of our students is incredibly important to the Board of Education, and so we hope that even if you have to leave the meeting early, that you will still be able to participate in that conversation or ask us clarifying questions afterwards. All right, and with that, I'll move on to the consent calendar. It's now the time when we approve our consent calendar. Colleagues, can I get a motion in a second to approve our consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Moved by Director Babett. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Director Cheng. And Ms. Chares, can you call the roll for the vote, please?
Director Shonowski?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Clark?
Yes.
Director Cheng?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Vassaddeau?
Yes. And now we're moving to our first agenda item, just very excited, which is discussion item 13.1, the report of BUSD's 2023-2024 end-of-year data. So Associate Superintendent, are you introducing this item? Or the superintendent?
You just did, but I'll say some words when I do.
So, good evening. Oh, is it? Y'all hear me? Good evening again, Board of Directors and members of the BUSD community. I'm so happy there's still members of the community here to listen. We are here this evening to share highlights from the 23-24 end-of-year data. Not working. The presentation this evening is an opportunity for us to reflect on our work towards our shared mission of academic excellence and our commitment to excellence, equity, enrichment, and engagement across our classrooms. Clicker problems. The goals of our time before you are to help you better understand BUSD's theory of change and improvement framework for instruction, and to review data sets that could provide some indication of our progress towards our mission and desired goals. We'll be looking at three different data sets, focused on ELA or reading, math, and this year, we'll be sharing data on science. Now, as the data informs school district, we believe in multiple measures to assess and evaluate progress and impact. This evening's conversation, however, will be focused on one measure, and that's the CASP assessments, which include the Smarter Balance Assessments in ELA and math, and the CAST Assessment in science. These assessments are administered across California each spring. Though this is only one of many types of data that we use in our system, it is an important one, and is the one that is used to evaluate our district to determine resource allocation from the state and sometimes from the federal level. And it's the one assessment that's shared across school districts and can be a point of comparison, sharing of best practices, and evaluation of overall growth in the county. This presentation and the discussion that will follow also aligns to our LCAP Goals Number One and LCAP Goal Number Two, which are here on the screen, as well as the Critical Pillar of Academic Excellence and Equitable Outcomes for All from our budding Strategic Plan. That's the plug for Strategic Plan. We have five pillars, and this is the top one. We are clear that our work as a school district is focused on teaching and learning. This and every time we analyze data, we do so with a learning orientation, seeing data as an opportunity for reflection and growth, a place and a chance for us to evaluate where we are making wanted progress and explore why and how that progress is being made, as well as an opportunity for us to stop and be honest about where we need to have more attention focused on continued growth. Now, before jumping into the data, you've all waited this long. It was just released a couple of weeks ago from the state, so you can wait a little bit longer. We want to make sure we take some time to orient you around our theory of change for this work. That is what we think has to happen to achieve academic excellence and how we actually move to get there. We understand that our work is not just making sure that we ensure equity and academic excellence for all of our students, but that we are very intentional to make sure that we are disrupting persistent trends around focal student populations, as well addressing the opportunity equity gap that doesn't just exist in BUSD, but exists in many areas of public education. Now, this slide in front of you does not reveal the theory of change specifically, but this quote by Michael Fulen does reinforce our beliefs that whatever we do, it must be aligned and coherent, and it must connect our purpose with our policies and ultimately with our practices in our schools and in our classrooms. As we have centered the coherence work in BUSD over the past two years, we have focused on coherence and clarity around our identity, who we are, and what we are trying to accomplish as an instructional institution, understanding the work that we do and how we're doing it, infrastructure, making sure we have systems and structures to support and sustain our work, our efforts, and our expectations. our efforts, and our expectations for teaching and learning in BUSD classrooms, implementation, having a bias towards action and connecting our theory and plans to actual practice and doing, including strategies to monitor that implementation, and identified focal populations, doing the work to the benefit of all of our student body, of course, while paying specific attention, particularly focusing on those groups of students for whom we have historically underserved. And as we're moving toward organizational clarity, one important component is how we measure our progress and hold ourselves accountable. Remember, as part of our LCAP work last spring, in addition to updating our LCAP goals, we also updated and aligned our metrics and identified our new three-by-five target, meaning that across most of our measures, we are looking for 3% annual growth for all students and an accelerated target of 5% for our focal student groups annually. This is important for two reasons. One is that we have a shared understanding of what that target is. We know it, and we can name it, three-by-five. And two, that we have a demonstrated commitment to accelerating the outcomes for our focal student groups. I feel like we should take a pop quiz. Everybody can close their eyes. What's the target? Three-by-five. Okay. Right, we're good. All right. As we are heading, as we head into looking at the data tonight, we also want to center this presentation around our BUSD theory of change or improvement. We know from research and work in continuous improvement that there are three insights that drive organizational excellence. We talked a little bit about them in a couple of our presentations last spring. But the first of these is that ideal results require ideal behaviors. For our work in BUSD, this involves delivering high-quality, high-quality tier-one instruction that is research-based and standards-aligned, and that we're clear on the instructional practices that we, and that we appropriately provide intervention and support. It also means that we're intentional about collaboration and that our professional development and coaching is aligned and supported and informed through observation and feedback. Next is that purpose and systems drive behavior. We know that we need to anchor this work in our systems, and that is involving our MTSS framework and a system that is data-informed. And then finally, mindsets inform behaviors. Any transformational work requires us to recognize that mindsets play a role in actions that people make. And the mindset around continuous improvement is one that is critical to us as a learning organization. We need to be intentional about reflecting so that we can learn from both growth and failure. Some of our actions that we take are going to have positive results, and we need to understand why. And some of those actions that we take are not going to get us the results that we're looking for, and we need to understand why and what we can change. We're leveraging the theory of change here to move us toward realizing the academic excellence that we call out in our district's mission. And we recognize that learning takes place in, with real human beings, in real classrooms, and that those interactions and classroom environments need to be student-centered, academically rigorous, culturally responsive, inclusive, humanizing, and ultimately joyful places for all of our students. Just making sure everyone's still here. So now that you are familiar, somewhat familiar with our theory of change and improvement, which speaks to implementation and the implementation work we've been doing, we are now about to move to talking about the impact of those efforts. Again, we understand the importance of multiple measures, but this evening we'll be focusing on our yearly state CASP assessment, which includes the Smarter Balance assessment in ELA, the Smarter Balance assessment in math, and the CAST assessment for science. We also want to pause and again speak about how we look at data across our district for all of our students and have multiple instruments to do so. But these particular assessments are specific to certain grade level, so I'm going to call those out. For the Smarter Balance assessment for ELA and math, the grades that are assessed each spring are grades three through eighth and 11th grade. So when you hear us talking about high school students, for example, in this presentation, we are only speaking about our 11th graders at the time. For the CAST assessment, the science assessment, those are for students in grades five and eight and once in high school, typically also in the 11th grade. As we talk about this data, we will also be disaggregating the data in a couple of ways. We will be looking at our students by program, and you can see the list of our programs here. These programs identify students with IEPs, are students who are identified as ELs, et cetera. We will also be showing you and disaggregating data by race and ethnicity, and you can see the racial and ethnic background of our district on this slide. Finally, before we get to it, want to make sure that we are all understanding what we are looking at and reading. When we talk about proficiency this evening, well, first of all, we will only be looking at proficiency this evening, identifying where we've made growth in proficiency and the percentage of proficiency for whatever particular aspect of data that we're looking at. We know that there are a number of different ways to look at data. We typically, in our internal conversations, we not only talk about absolute proficiency, but also identify and note where students are growing even within performance levels and across performance levels, because that's also important to inform instruction. But again, in the interest of time, we are going to only focus on proficiency this evening. When speaking about proficiency on the California CASP assessment test, this is the breakdown. Meeting or exceeding standards is identified as level three or level four. And for the purposes of this presentation, three and four is combined to say proficient. And then not meeting or nearly meeting standards is identified as one or two. And again, for the purpose of this presentation, you will hear us say did not meet proficiency or not proficient. When we are, again, internally monitoring, we're looking for movement across these levels as well and not just the absolute level, because we're looking for both growth as well as acceleration. All right, y'all ready? So I am just going to share with you district-wide what the results were for the CASP, sorry, for the SBA data, ELA, and math. For English Language Arts, 69.94 or 70% of our students here in BUSD, again, in those tested grades, met or exceeded standards. For Mathematics, 64.66, going forward, we'll say 65% of the students in BUSD in those testing grades met or exceeded standard. I'm going to pause there. I was pausing because, y'all, that's a big deal. So whether or not you know it, that is not necessarily what we see when we look at other districts. And we also know that our goal is to move closer to that 100% mark, but we are happy and excited that over 50% of our students in BUSD are proficient in both English and math, and particularly happy given that the data and the research has shown that post-pandemic, many districts saw a decline or had a hard time seeing improvements in their data. And so the fact that BUSD has been able to maintain over 60% is a pretty important feat and something that keeps us motivated every day as we continue to want to see growth and progress for our students. Another data point that we want to share with you is the comparison to state and county. Again, the CASP assessments that we're focused on this evening is the one assessment that is commonly given across school districts and can be used as a point of comparison. Historically, BUSD has scored higher than students in Alameda County and even higher compared to students across California. And again, we're excited to share that that trend, even post-pandemic, has continued. BUSD scored 15% higher in Language Arts than Alameda County and 18% higher in Math than Alameda County. BUSD also scored 23% higher in Language Arts or Reading through all of California and 29% higher in Math, again, compared to California as well. Not only did we score higher than both districts and, I'm sorry, both county and state, but we also exceeded the growth of the county and state in that for the county level, for ELA, we had the highest gains of all the districts. I think we were maybe tied with Emory. And then for Mathematics, we also outperformed the other districts. And so again, that's not our motivation, but it is a point of comparison and a point of information for us as we continue to work with other districts to close our opportunity and achievement gaps that exist. So if you want more information about those comparisons or just how the districts and the county did, we have included slides in the appendix, slides directly from Alameda County Office of Education that gives more detail. But for the remainder of this presentation, we're going to focus solely on the work and the outcomes of BUSD. Before doing so, I'd like to introduce to you the team that is presenting this information to you. Of course, Jill Hogan-Dyke, our Assistant Superintendent, is here, Associate Superintendent, sorry, is here with us. We also have at the end, Mr. Chris Albeck, who is our Director of Curriculum and Instruction and who has led a lot of the work that we are going to be sharing with you this evening. We also have Rose James, our PK-12 Literacy Coordinator, who again is also the lead for a lot of the literacy work that's been happening in our district and that continues to happen. And reintroducing to you all, Ms. Lena Sweeney, who was here in a different capacity before, but is now our new Director of Brea. And with that, I'm going to pass to Jill to continue the presentation.
All right, before we get into the numbers about our proficiency rates in ELA and math, we do want to make sure that we're grounding this in our completion rates. We don't just monitor the results of assessments, but we need to also monitor how many of our students are taking the assessment. The state requires an at-least 95 participation rate. And as you can see here, for grades three through eight, the numbers are looking pretty good. We had a little bit of a dip on the science assessment. So it's just important to reinforce that taking the assessments is important. It's important for us to have that end size of 95% or higher so that we can make some assessments about the work that we're doing and where we need to continue to monitor progress. We can't be data-informed if students aren't participating in the assessment. So that's just a little plug to make sure that as we head into assessment time, your students are here and ready to participate. We do have some more work to do, as you can see here, with our high schools. We have been in active conversations with the Berkeley High School team to understand the challenges that are happening in the system to ensure that we're assessing students at that 95% rate, which you can see has really fluctuated over time, but took a dip in the spring of 2024. What we've been noticing is that there has been a big push at the beginning of the assessment window, but we still have some areas to explore for improvement in terms of the timing of the assessments. There's been a recognition that the CASP assessments are running into the AP testing windows and then improving our makeup testing time. So that, those are two specific areas that we'll be paying attention to as we head into this year. We're going to start to look at our SBA performance data by content area, beginning with English. And so I do want to just remind folks that in our August 21st board presentation on the Literacy Action Plan, we looked at overall progress for our STAR and DIBL screening assessments. And as a reminder, our students in grades three through five, the grades that you see here, take the STAR assessment three times the year, three times a year. That screening assessment helps us identify students who may be in need of additional support and intervention. And these are the data, those data are ones that we can be more nimble with across the course of the year. We were also able, at the time of that August presentation, to share with you the work that's been underway and will continue and will continue as we build and strengthen the delivery of our literacy instruction to our students. The SBA assessment data that we're looking at tonight here is summative and tells us how many of our students show proficiency on those grade-level standards. So for spring of 2024, you can see here that 70% of our elementary students were showing proficiency in our ELA standards. And while our three-by-five targets were set in the spring, a little bit after the administration of that assessment window, we do see here that there was a 3% growth overall. And then that growth does vary across the grade, the elementary grades tested. For the middle, similarly, we saw a 3% growth for our secondary students overall with higher proficiency rates at our sixth and seventh grades than our other grades. So in addition to looking at the growth and proficiency by grade level, we are also looking at that by our focal student population. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rose James to talk with you about our assessment data by focal groups.
Good evening, Board members. So as Jill said, I will now transition us to looking at our CASP results year to year, but disaggregated by our focal populations. And as our superintendent pointed out, this assessment is an indicator, right, of, it's one data point that we look at that really is asking students to use higher-order reading and writing skills. And so for our upper elementary and our secondary students, something that we're thinking about as we look at this data is that a lot of our literacy work to date, we've had a very specific focus around tier-one foundational skills and intervention. And so just thinking about that and having that lens as we look at this data. Yeah. Okay. So here on this slide, we see our SBA performance data for the last three years, broken down by race and ethnicity. We're seeing positive growth sort of between 2% and 4% for most of our subgroups, including our Black African-American students, who showed 3% overall growth. And I think it's important to say that although progress is being made, we continue to acknowledge and continue to work towards disrupting inequitable outcomes that we see in this data when it's broken down by race and ethnicity. So on this next slide, we see our SBA performance data for the last three years, and this time broken down by special programs. We have 5% growth in our number of socio-economically disadvantaged students and a 6% growth for our students experiencing homelessness, which is a place, those are both places where we were able to hit or exceed that acceleration target of 5%. While we did see dips for our English learner populations and our students with IEPs. So what will follow next on the next few slides is a closer look at each of our data by ethnic group and program, but broken down by grade. So as I said, this next series of slides, we're going to look at our year-over-year percentage of proficient students in our focal populations and the percent change between those years. So here on this slide, you can see that for our Black and African-American students. And there were some notable jumps, specifically in fifth and 11th grade. We see 3% overall growth from 26% to 29%. As you will see a little bit later, Director Sweeney is going to share some of the school-level bright spots and the strategies that school sites are employing that are showing some positive impacts on CASP data for our Black and African-American students. The negative percent changes for third, fourth, and seventh, as well as that stability in sixth through eighth emphasize a need to continue our work and our focus on a strong implementation across our schools of an evidence-based curriculum that very importantly has, holds students to a high level of rigor and is culturally and linguistically responsive to our Black and African-American students. On this next slide, you'll see our Hispanic and Latinx student data, and we're seeing a 4% increase in proficiency overall. For this group in BUSD, we see a positive trend across third through 11th, with the exception of eighth grade. We believe the positive trends in year-over-year change here reflects the work that our superintendent and our associate superintendent talked about in terms of building our literacy system and our theory of action, beginning with capacity building around foundational skills instruction, which we started year before last with Shifting the Balance Book Study. And then last year, we did a big focus around language and literacy with the Core Reading Academy. And all of our educators in upper elementary and middle grades, hear myself. Middle grades received PD around topics like vocabulary and comprehension. So now looking at our students with IEPs, we saw many, sorry, many grade levels. Got it? It's not working. Oh, okay.
Try it again.
So let's see. I don't know what slide number this is.
Let me try the... It was working.
29. Okay. Can we go to slide 29? Oh, she can't move it either. Okay. Okay, there we go. Now we got it. So here we see the same breakdown for our students with IEPs, with most grade levels showing decreases from 2023 to 2024. As I mentioned earlier, we've had a really intense focus on foundational skills and supporting all students, especially those needing intensive reading support with Orton Gillingham. And as we shared in our Literacy Action Plan report in August, we've been concentrating on goal-setting for students with IEPs. At the beginning of the year, 3% of IEP goals for students with reading difficulties had a goal using our screener data, so DIBLs or STAR. And we increased that. And we increased that to 60%. So this is important because these goals drive that support that we provide our students with IEPs. We, moving forward, we also recognize the importance of continuing to monitor, support, and strengthen our use of evidence-based interventions and supports, and really importantly, making sure that it's aligned to their tier one instruction. This next slide, hopefully we can get to it. Yes, okay. This is looking at our socioeconomically disadvantaged student population, and we see a very positive pattern of between 3% and 12% growth, with the exception, again, of eighth grade. I think this calls out our need to focus on our middle schoolers who are transitioning to high school and to understand some of the literacy strengths and challenges for our eighth graders. I know in particular, our interventions at the middle school level have been focused on sixth and seventh. And so thinking about that, I think that explains the dip in eighth grade. In the positive trend, though, we see as well the work that teachers and staff are doing to support students and families with literacy learning and really build that bridge between school and home around reading development. And that's an important lever in this work that we'll continue to improve upon and refine. Here we see percent proficient changes for our multilingual learners. There is a 2% dip overall. We are not seeing the positive trends reflected in, that we see in some of our other focal populations, and we're seeing some stagnancy as well as some dips across the grades. Given the growth that we shared with you in August around our screening data for our multilingual learners from fall to spring of last year, we are reflective on this change in progress and have been in conversations with our school stakeholders around what the causation might be for these results. And as of now, as part of our work towards fulfilling the goals in our multilingual learner master plan, we have engaged ELD specialists in a series of training, first starting with systematic ELD training for designated ELD, but we've also initiated some constructing meaning training at an opt-in level first, but we will continue to need to think about and learn about the challenges and experience of our multilingual learners and how, especially how our literacy focus intersects with their specific needs as a linguistically diverse group of learners. And on this next slide, we're going to look at our multilingual learners that are Spanish-speaking. While the state shares data for English learners, through our Latinx resolution, we call attention specifically to our Spanish-speaking multilingual learners and our students in this category, our students who have not yet been reclassified, meaning that they have not yet demonstrated English proficiency on the LPAC or the STAR or DIBELS. So there is an added challenge for these students when they're taking an assessment like the CASP, particularly in the upper grades when the language demands on the state assessment are more complex. Newcomers in the middle school who are learning English may have greater gaps in their proficiency than students in lower grades. And in addition to that, as I mentioned, systematic ELD is a training that ELD teachers are receiving right now, as well as they'll be receiving Orton Gillingham training to help our emerging readers. We've also launched the Rewards Reading Program in middle school for our long-term English learners at the middle school level, which includes work around academic language and development and comprehension. This is the last slide, and this is where we'll be looking closer at our students experiencing housing insecurity. As noted earlier, I think, or maybe we haven't gotten to a slide like this yet, but student populations that have smaller total numbers of students can't be reflected here to protect their identity. However, we see in the numbers that we're able to reflect here some positive gains for a fourth, eighth, as well as a 6% increase overall. One factor that can explain this positive trend we see is the work of our Office of Family Engagement and our Pupil Services Department. They've been really furthering the work, the network of support to combat chronic absenteeism, ensuring that our students are coming to school at high rates is a priority for us, and we feel confident that when they're in school, we can support their academic development. With that, I'm going to pass it over to Director Sweeney to share more details around some of the bright spots in ELA.
Thank you and good evening. So on this slide, with our commitment to continuous learning and improvement connected to our theory of action, we explore new practices and study their efficacy. In looking at our growth in English Language Arts, we revisited our strategies. While there were bright spots across sites, on this slide, we highlighted a few, reflecting their growth and some of the potential reasons why. We ask, what can we learn from these successes? And now I'll pass to Director Albeck.
Good evening, everybody. Now we'll take a look at our mathematics scores as of the end of last school year.
Sorry, we just wanted to ask if you all want to engage in questions now or if you want to wait till the end. We just finished the ELA assessment slides, and so whatever the board's preference is.
My preference would be to ask questions now and break it into small pieces under our colleagues.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. So then I'll turn to my colleagues first. I have a couple of questions, but I don't know if one of my colleagues wants to start. Student Director Clark.
Okay. I was just wondering, since I think students don't understand the importance of these tests itself, so they don't perform as accurately to their knowledge as they should. I was wondering how you guys plan to address the significance of standardized testing to encourage greater student engagement and ensure that their performance accurately represents their knowledge.
I think that's a very good question, particularly at the secondary level. We know, we know that there is heightened attention to our AP testing, as an example. And so there are some theories about how and whether or not students understand the impact of having strong scores on the SBA assessment. So it can help serve as a qualifying measure for our California State and State University system. And so there's definitely work that we can be doing to better address that. I think it's also connected to the work that we're doing to build and drive a data-informed culture, which is understanding that these assessments are important touchpoints for us to be able to be reflective about our practices. One of the things that we're initiating this year at the high school is the STAR assessment for ninth and 10th grade. So that will, I think, help start building routines and awareness around assessment and why that's important.
I think to piggyback on that, just again, because we are a learning organization, one of the things that we've talked about, particularly at the secondary level, is engaging you all, engaging the students themselves to understand what they know or don't know about the importance. Again, as Ms. Hogan like said, the AP exam or the exams that our secondary students typically might really run to, and that is likely because they have an expectation of how participating in that examination could benefit them, either currently or more likely in the years after high school. And so engaging in some focus groups and some Q and A, if you will, around what their understanding is of the value of these assessments is one strategy we've been thinking about. One thing we've been doing, though, is also making sure that our parents and guardians, even at the secondary level, just thinking about a presentation I recently did with Collegebound, understand the assessments and understand the value of taking the assessment. So thinking about it as a multi-pronged approach, we've been really focusing on our, excuse me, on our educators, making sure they understand the value of engaging students, and that has taken off in the lower grades, if you will. And now really wanting to move it up to making sure the students themselves, who, as we've demonstrated, Berkeley students have a lot of agency, understand the importance of it. And that's not just for this assessment. That's for our internal assessments as well. And we do have some different participation rates for those assessments than we do for this one.
And the only thing else that I would add to that is, as much as this is about LPAC Goal 1 and 2, we know that when students feel safe, these students feel heard, and students feel cared for by the educators in their classroom, it makes them want to do better and try the hardest that they can. So as always, we're focused on that wellness and belonging to ensure that when students are in learning spaces, they feel the social-emotional support that they need to do the best that they can.
Vice President Brown.
I have a series of questions, but I just wanted to make a response to this specifically. I think Director Clark's point is so important for many reasons, but I think especially at the 11th grade level, there are colleges and universities who are now looking at ESPEC data as a way to consider approval into their, or acceptance, rather, into their colleges. And so I'm not sure how many families, how many students are aware of this, but they absolutely need to know that and that performance on the ESPEC test does not just impact your class or the district, but it impacts the student as an individual. And so I'd like to know how we're sharing that information, how many of our educators are aware of that information, how many are students, how many of our families are aware of that also. So that's my first question. My second, as it relates to this topic, is that the last time we received data from you all, specifically talking about the ESPEC, I made a recommendation that we really consider using IABs, because IABs are, it's a great preparation for the ESPEC. It's the interim assessment block test that you all know, but for the public, it's a test that they can take in preparation, and it's categorized by standard and by units that students are learning, and they can take it at the end of each unit, and it really, really is formatted and structured in the same way that the SBA is. And it is a great tool that is available to us that is free, as well as our ICAs that we can take up to three times a year. And so the last direction that I gave when we were here is that I'd really like to see both the IABs and the ICAs being utilized. So I'd like to receive some, an update to know where we are with that.
Yes, so in response to the use of IABs, in some of our reflection on some of our bright spots, that has come up when looking at some of our positive data momentum as one of the practices that some school sites, many school sites were engaging in and seeing positive data as a result, or at least that's one of our, one of our wonderings is how much those IABs are positively correlating with some of the positive data that we're seeing.
And do we know how many classes are using IABs? Do we have the data on that? Is that the standard that we're providing saying that we want to utilize them alongside with the curriculum that we're using? What's our, what's our focus on that?
So again, we have some, so we do have data on sites that have used the IABs and can get more information about the rate of use and participation. But as Lena said, there are schools and classrooms that are using and piloting it, but we have not made a system-wide shift to the IABs. And that is for multiple reasons, not because we don't see the benefit in the assessments as possible predictors of how our students would do on ESPEC, but again, as we were, you know, managing change in our system, getting our teachers to even move and shift to the use of DIBELS and STAR and using those assessments and understanding them with fidelity, we were just mindful not to then add on another as such what they need to learn. That is not to say that that is not the direction we might go in. Definitely would love to hear feedback from those educators who have piloted, because that is oftentimes a way to increase practices is to have other educators say, and, I gave this, or to even see results like the ones that we're seeing at some of those bright spot schools and can contribute that, at least in part, to the use of the IABs as a predictive measure that can inform, that can inform the work. And so that is still the direction we're going, Vice President Brown, but it has not yet been a system-wide shift that we have made in year two, now going into year three.
And we've made some progress on it, Vice President Brown, as well. So every year, we review our pacing guides as it relates to mathematics. And this year, at the K5 level, when we were redoing our pacing guides, we put all the IABs and ICAs in the pacing guides as opportunities for those assessments. So this was the first, a step forward. We have not mandated all IABs to happen per the points in the year, but we have put them into the pacing guides as recommendations, as points of clarification as we continue to defend on ourselves as a data-informed culture. I think we're taking a step forward there, and we're committed to continue to do so.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Superintendent, and I always want to call you Director Chris, but I appreciate both of your responses, and that's specifically for the IABs. Now the ICAs, we are doing three times a year as a standard, are we not?
We're doing our screening assessments three times a year, our STAR.
But we're not using the state ICAs three times a year. We're not mandating that we use the, okay. The direction that I would like to, I'm happy we're using our screeners, I know they're super helpful. The direction I would really like to provide is ICAs three times a year, absolutely. IABs, teacher fidelity, like teacher autonomy, I understand that. But ICAs, we really, really should be using, especially we have those three opportunities to use them. So I think we absolutely should use them, and so I'd love to engage in ways in which we can or provide, I'm sure I don't have to provide this to you all because you already know, but provide best practices or reasons why we absolutely should be using those, especially from the perspective of practice, giving our students the opportunity to practice. I can imagine being in the third grade where this is the first time you're taking this assessment. You've taken local assessments in your classroom all year, but this is the first time you're taking a really big state assessment and haven't had any practice on it, especially as it relates to looking at the format, not on the content or the information in the assessment. I know that they are well-versed on that because they're learning that in their class every single day. But on the actual assessment, we have the opportunity to expose our children and give them opportunities to practice. Let's please utilize those. I do have other questions that don't relate to this. Can you help me understand what our, what our percentage of students who met and exceeded the standard in ELA was last academic year? I know this year you provided 69.94%, but I'd like to do some sort of comparative analysis just to know what it was last year. And what's triggered that for me is the slides around the ELA year-over-year growth and how it's disaggregated by race and by our focal areas. But I'd like to know overall what it is. Oh, thank you so much.
So last year was 67% overall proficient in ELA for our elementary students and 70% for this year. Is that your question?
Yes, that is. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And then you all, when you all were sharing, specifically around our focal students, I know that you were sharing what caused the success that we were able to see in grades like three and four. I'm sorry, what success we saw specifically in grade 11 for our African American students, but I wanted to know what caused the drop. And you may have shared it, and I may have just been taking in the data and having my own little personal crisis moment that I missed it. And so if you could go back and share kind of those success stories and those areas of growth, and I think that will ring true, not just for our Black and African American students, but what also happened for our students with IEPs that we identified specifically students, but what also happened for our students with IAPs that we identified specifically in grades three, four, seven, and eight for the, for that focal group. And then there was another group, but unfortunately I missed, I'm having a hard time reading my own notes. So if we could just paint the story to see like what happened, what, what, what didn't work well, what, where did we miss the mark? And then for 11th grade, to go from 10% to 29% is something great. So what is the success story there that we can use to apply to every grade and, and every, every group of students? And then I have one more question after that and I'll take a step back.
So I will definitely let the team respond to your question. And before doing so, I just want to be really transparent about when we are talking about the data, both the areas in which it has moved in the positive direction, as well as examples of when it is either stagnant or moving in the opposite direction. We are not here to propose that we know exactly what happened because we are a district engaged in continuous improvement and only in our third year, starting out as a team, we are still very much in the learning phase of trying to understand what we did and what we did not do that led to the results. And so I just wanted to preface that for the audience, even in those places where we're seeing success, we're cautious to say that correlation is causational, that we know exactly what has happened. Also want to add to that, for the site-specific bright spots, you know, there's, there's two third-grade classes, or we're talking about a group of students at a specific site, and it's easier, in some ways, I'm scared to use that word, but it's a little bit easier to identify what specific practices happened that we might think led to the success. We're talking about district-wide data, specifically the examples that you gave. For example, our fifth graders, our fifth-grade African-American students, we're talking about across multiple sites. And so we are still in the process of engaging with our educators. So, you know, that would look like is pulling out the fifth-grade teachers and having conversations about what did you do and finding where there was commonalities and what they did across, you know, the 10 or 11 sites and then saying which of those things that we think led to improvement. And we have not yet pinpointed that yet. There's definitely anecdotal data and observational data that we've made, either as a team or as individuals, or things that even our fifth-grade teachers, for example, can speak to, but we are still very much and just very transparently in the study stage to figure out what happened across all of BUSD fifth grade that led to that 17% increase, and then what didn't happen across all of BUSD third grade perhaps that led to that 7% reduction in proficiency for our African-American students. Again, our theory of action gives some ideas of what we know we've instituted system-wide, but in terms of how it's actually happened or the degree of fidelity with which has happened, et cetera, Director Brown, we are still studying and understanding. One of the pieces in our theory of action talks about reflection as a part of the work that we do. I'm sorry, that's not what I was going to say. It wasn't reflection. I just lost my answer. Sorry. I'll come back to you.
Okay. Thank you for that. I really would, the direction I'd like to provide on this point is really encourage those conversations to happen sooner rather than, than later. I know there are some things and some shifts that have been made, some of which you all presented to us before receiving this data tonight, some of which we've given direction for. And so like, let's, let's tell the story and like, let's learn from the story, which I'm sure you all are going to do. But I think how powerful would it be if we saw this data and we knew exactly what changes we made to, to shift the data and to make it better? And if we could call out explicitly what we didn't do and what we still need to do and where the gaps are so that we can change the data that still is in the 20s for, for our Black and African-American students and the other focal groups are multilingual students, multilingual learners. So I think it's great, you know, for us to receive the data, but the data tells us a story. And if we don't take, take ownership, and not saying that you're not, but if we have the opportunity to take ownership of the shifts that we see and the trends that we see in our data, then we can tell our own story versus people making up whatever they think happened. And so I appreciate your partnership on that, Superintendent and staff. And then finally, just in looking at the data, and I'm going to be, you know, specific to our Black and African-American students because we're on the slide and because we time and time again see this as a group that needs support, what, what is our need, our direct support need beyond what we are providing? And what is our, our plan of action to ensure that that's happening?
Can I go back? So what I forgot, what I was trying to remember to say was that when you look at our theory of action, observation and feedback, well, no, let me go back before that. So first of all, I want to be clear that we are not here to say, and if I imply it otherwise, I apologize, that we cannot tell the story about the work that we're doing that has, that we believe has led to the outcomes that you've seen. Again, that's why we started with our theory of improvement and change. In our appendix of our presentation, we have, starting on slide 61, some more details about what the specific actions are around literacy, since we're talking about the literacy section, that we believe led to improvement. What I was trying to articulate is, again, when we start to nuance it by grade level, for example, I want to make sure that we are telling the right story. And the piece of the theory of action that I would say we did, we need to develop more and do better at and really kind of grow is the observation, feedback component of the theory of action. And what that means is that there are practices that we are saying, "All schools do this or all classrooms do that." Getting into the classrooms to see where it is happening, where it is not happening, will help us better tell the story, but will also help us to better answer the question around, why is it that certain grade levels or certain populations are not necessarily seeing the same growth, even though the same practices are being implemented in the classrooms? Those pieces of information or data or storytelling, if you will, cannot happen accurately without that next component of observation and feedback, of getting into those classrooms and seeing the teacher implement the strategies that we've learned in our PD, that they've gotten feedback on in their coaching and saying, "I see that you're doing it, but I noticed that with this particular group of students or with this student over here, those practices might not be being done either with the same level of rigor or fidelity, et cetera." So I do not want anyone to leave thinking that we cannot tell the story. We tried to start off by telling the story, but I also want to be honest about the ways in which this data is, is very nuanced and I don't want folks, I don't want to tell a false story. And I want to be really honest about there's some things we can speak to and there's still a lot that we have to learn about what we're doing and not doing that's having the impact that we want to have. And that observation and feedback piece of the component of the equation, I think will help us do that.
Thank you. Did you want to respond to my second question about direct support needs?
Well, I think for our literacy work in particular, so thank you to Berkeley Voters because we do have funds that help support our literacy coaches. We had made a significant financial investment in the core training last year, and I do want to acknowledge our literacy coaches in particular because they have been instrumental in continuing that delivery of professional development. I think that what, one thing we actually heard from principals this morning when we were looking at some of the data is the importance of being able to fully support a full-time literacy coach at each of the schools. What we also heard from George Ellis's monitoring report in June was that we, you know, a lot of our school site specialists are spending a significant amount of their time as service delivery providers for that intervention and that it would be really important to, our superintendent's comment about the observation and feedback, but it's really important to be able to have designated time to do the coaching and support. And that's going to be particularly important as we're making as a, as a, as a district, a significant shift into a new curriculum for our elementary grades starting next year. What we have heard from our school leaders is about the importance of having specific designated professional development time, so a need to have additional days in the summer, as an example, headed into the school year, so that we can make sure that we have levels set on those expectations. And I think then providing that capacity for our literacy coaches to do the work of, of coaching. And I know that Director Dean, who's here alongside of Director Albeck, have been working with our principals on that instructional leadership component and then how we can start making those regular observations and feedback for the purposes of learning, right? Like, it's really important for us to be able to understand what's happening, what some of the challenges are so that we can work to address them.
Director Babett?
Yes, thank you. And just as we, as we ask questions, if we can leave space and if it's time for us to piggyback on some of those questions so we don't have to revisit them backwards, because now I got to go back to a bunch of stuff. So that would be helpful as a coworker colleague for us to think about. So when we talk about ICAs, for example, and IABs, which I got to go back four questions So, did you or did you not say that our bright spot schools were using those practice IABs?
Yes, some of our bright spot schools are using IABs and some are wondering if that's part of, part of the reason for the increase.
Is that like the ones you highlighted, like the BAM, the Emerson, are they definitely doing it or no?
To my understanding, those two schools are, yes.
Okay. And then when we look at the ICAs, I just want to definitely back up Director, Vice President Brown, because especially when you haven't taken a test from eighth grade to now your next test is 11th grade and we're not even doing the ICBs for 10th graders, we're not really doing the prep work so that you've had this break and now all of a sudden I'm supposed to perform at 11th grade, right? And so I think, why are you laughing? I think making that routine is very important. Do you want to comment on that?
Was that, was it a question or just a comment? Because...
Well, it's both.
Got it. Okay. So one, I want to appreciate that feedback, both from you and from Vice President Brown. And again, going back to our theory of action, which I'm going to reference a lot, is a data-informed culture. And to be clear, when we talk about a data-informed culture, it is a rather comprehensive culture in that there's, again, multiple measures, but also multiple purposes for assessments. And so the fact that at this moment, we have not implemented the ICAs, again, does not imply or say that we don't intend to, it really means that, again, we're trying to manage change and chunk change such that is digestible and actually happens. I recall two years ago when we started here in BUSD, that the culture around assessments was not necessarily that of excitement, right? And there was a lot of hesitancy on the part of community members and parents even in letting their students take a test and what the test means, et cetera, but also on the part of our educators to really understand the value of it and how it can be used to inform instruction. So we were strategic to start with assessments that actually inform instruction. And not that the ICAs don't help instructionally, but they are really about practice and can be a predictor for this summative assessment. And so we're going to definitely phase those types of assessments in, but just want to be really clear that we were trying to chunk the change. Our ultimate goal, though, is to definitely have a really robust assessment system that includes screeners and diagnostics and summative and formative and, you know, formal and informal. And so we are definitely committed, and I want you all to hear that and the community, they're gone, to hear that we are, we are continuing to build. So the assessments that we have are not it, right? We know there's a lot more work that we have to do, inclusive of assessments that give our students opportunities to actually practice taking a standardized test. So that feedback is received and echoed because we're working on figuring out how to continue to build out this system in year three of our time as a team.
Thank you. I also want to talk about, we were mentioning our reflective work and what we are observing in the different classes. It's why I've been pushing for the equity walkthroughs to take place, because this data is extremely disheartening for people to sit in the same classrooms and have such a tremendous difference in their actual results. And so until our instructional leaders of the house are actually going through and making sure that equity is happening in the instruction in the classroom, I actually have no idea how we're going to get to different results than we've seen year after year after year. As Chris Albeck said, talking about relationships and how important that is, if nobody's going in to show, "Hey, do you see how your relationship with this student is basically non-existent?" And how when you disregard their questions, it cuts off their relationships. We can do practice tests, we can do all these IABs, but we have to make sure that every professional is really thinking about their relationship with their students and the foundation of how they are inclusive. That's why we're talking about safe welcoming and inclusive environment for all students in the learning mode, right? And so that leads me to this question about our three-by-five plan, right? We want 3% for all, 5% for our focal students. Well, what is the plan to make sure that that 2% happens when they're all in the same classroom? How are you going to make sure that this focal group is getting that extra 2% work? What, what is the differentiation in instruction? Like, what is going to happen that's going to make three-by-five real and not an accident? Or, oh, we did it or we didn't do it. We don't know why we did it over here, but we did it over there.
Yeah, could we look towards slide, an appendix, slide 62?
Yeah. Who's got the... All the way there.
I think, doesn't have that.
Yeah, I think as we're getting to that place, because I think Director Albeck's going to talk about some of the practices, what I will say is, as part of building a data-informed system and implementing our current assessments, what we have been doing are STAR and DIBELS are screening assessments, but we also have been using DIBELS as a progress monitor in that DIBELS score is giving us more accurate information about the areas that need, areas of reading that need to be addressed for students, which is giving us better information about how and where to intervene. We've also invested significant resources in training our site-based specialists in Orton Gillingham, and we're seeing a lot of positive growth in students who are participating in OG. One of the learnings that we had, because we do have EdgeClimber, right, we're now able to track the progress monitoring, is that we had some variation in the dropdown menu on EdgeClimber to be able to make this one-for-one, one-to-one. And I think, I'm looking at Lena, some of that's been cleaned up this year so that we can make that decision. But to your, to your point, Director Babett, about how do we ensure that acceleration, part of that has to happen because we're making faster, more informed decisions about the, the specific areas in literacy development that a student needs. And we're better able to do that now than we were a year or a year and a half ago. And with that, oh...
Yeah, and just to sort of build on that, so last year, as Associate Superintendent Hogan-Dyke mentioned, we did a lot of focus on Tier Two and Three, and we trained a lot of our practitioners in using the screening assessments to inform instruction, collect diagnostic data, and progress monitor students who need additional support. But what we know is that just pulling students out for 30 minutes of additional support is not enough to accelerate their progress, right? And it really needs to happen in the classroom. So this year is really about aligning the classroom practices with student need. So not, not waiting for students to fail, but giving them what they need immediately. So we've been rolling out a very step-by-step plan with our classroom teachers around this new assessment protocol. So we screen students, we use that data to identify focal students who need additional support, and we are training our classroom teachers in how to use diagnostic data, where in the past, we've used reading levels as a way to provide differentiated instruction. This year, we're using the Core Diagnostic Assessment Manual, assessments to help teachers uncover exactly what the finished, unfinished learning that those students have and be able to target that in the classroom. And it's really through that, like alignment of Tier One and making sure that first teach is as strong and as targeted as possible, that we feel like we're going to see a lot of growth with our focal populations.
And then with Student Director Clark's point, when we talk about students really understanding the importance of taking these exams, are we also going back to align if their grades are reflective of these ESPEC results? Because we know some kids just bubble in, right, and they're not really actively participating. But can we also have presentations where we could find out if the percentage of grades in grading is working, is, is matching, are matching these ESPEC results? And that can also help us further understand our equity for grading, kind of, or grading for equity goals at the same time, and how that is aligning with the ESPEC results and our reflective observation. I think I'm pretty sure I asked for that last time, so I just want to really make sure that we withhold that going forward in future data presentations. And I'm also confused about, when I look at these bright spots in the appendix in other school, at all these various schools, the increases don't seem to be matching the overall results, which means there have to be some serious schools that are not doing well at all.
Say that, I don't understand what you're saying. Say it again.
So when I look at the bright spots, so for example, if I search Rosa Parks, and I go, and it'll come up on the appendix page as a bright spot increase, right? So I have bright spots in ELA on page 79, for example. We have increases of 6%, 7%, 8%, 10%, 15%, 34%. We have all these increases. We have all these increases, but then the overall data, I'm showing declines in some areas.
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying. So when we're looking at the school bright spots, ELA, and also for the next slide, bright spots for math, we're looking at all of the grade levels together within focal groups. So that is why the numbers will look slightly different. So for example, looking at John Muir, increased 5% for our socio-economically disadvantaged students. That's a 5% increase for all of the students who are under that category, who are taking the exam from three through five.
So then the total on the overall, on the slides where you have overall, should be somewhat closer to some of these bright, I don't know. It's just very, it's kind of misleading. I don't know how to use this without assuming that there must be some schools with huge declines. Is that true, that we have schools with huge declines, or?
We definitely have variance in performance across schools, and we do have, you know, our intent was to try to provide district-level data, but there had been some ask in previous presentations for some school data. We cannot show the entirety of school data, so we tried to highlight some bright spots. But we do have newsletters for each of our school sites that actually gives you the specific overall data for that school, as well as specific data for their focal populations, as well as their grade levels. But it is true, hence the data, looking at how it is, that there are some schools that made significant gains or stayed flat, and there's some who may have seen some declines in some areas or did not make as much progress.
Okay, thank you so much. Can I just ask one more question on ELA?
Sure.
And then I'll pass the mic. Just trying to pick which one is most important at this point. How are we making sure that we minimize the gap between our families with fewer resources and more resources as well? For example, how do we know which students are performing better because of the supplemental work that's happening at home and which students are not getting that supplemental work? Or they could be getting supplemental work in the after-school programs that people can pay for, that other students aren't privy to? So how are we assessing that to determine? Because that's going to impact your 2% differential, right?
Yeah, so that's, it's kind of challenging, Director Babbitt, to collect that level of data. What we are able to identify, of course, are students who are in, for example, our after-school program and know that there's examples of programs in our after-school that do additional academic enrichment. We're able to identify in EdgeClimber which students are in different interventions that we have, some interventions from our, some of our frameworks, as well as interventions in the schools. However, we're not able to get data that is reliable, quite honestly, on the additional supports that families are providing their students or that students have access to outside of BUSD. And so because of that, what we really try to do is focus on the things that are within our locus of control, which is first and foremost, what happens during the school day. That's both that Tier One instruction, as well as Tier Two and Tier Three. And of course, looking at data around students who are in other programs that we might provide. It is hard to then still make a jump around what has led to improvements because, again, we're really clear that correlation and causation are not always the same thing, and it's hard to pinpoint, was it, did that student show progress because they were in that school intervention or because they went to, you know, the YMCA camp one week in the summer? So unfortunately, we're not able to collect that data, but I think what we want to do and what research says is the best practice is to really focus again on that sphere of influence that we have, that our educators actually influence, and that is what's happening during the school day. And we really want to make ourselves accountable to tracking and understanding data and progress with regards to that. Aware, though, that there are, of course, families who do have the means to supplement their students' learning, and that might likely show up in some of the academic data. It's just hard for us to pinpoint and know for sure what those things are and how they're impacting. And then using that to make any, you know, decisions around next steps of support for students.
And I completely agree. I would just say, sending a questionnaire, a Google Form, a survey home to families is really easy, and it would also help us as we direct funds and think about supplements to make sure that we can offer those same kinds of services to other students. I personally would have definitely told you immediately what supplemental things that I was doing for my child, especially if it was going to help someone else, right? And we know that our educators will often teach to the top. And so if the top is the top because of all of these other initiatives that nobody else is a part of, I believe we will continue to see these kinds of results.
And we could definitely look at collecting information. I do want to say that we are able to and have been looking, again, at not just our intervention, but some of the programs that our students are in, that, again, are within BUSD, those who participate in, you know, some of our AASF programs, again, as an example, and can collect data around if those students have shown progress or not. But yes, it gets harder outside, but we can definitely collect that information. I do want to say, we do have two more content areas to share with you all, math and then science, which is the new one to share with you. And so if there are no further questions, we'll go ahead and transition. And I also, again, just want to acknowledge that that three-by-five target was created in the spring, and we still, despite having a long ways to go, specifically with our focal populations, have seen improvements in the outcomes of our focal populations. If you look again at those slides around growth, both by race and ethnicity, as well as program, though it might not be when you break it down by grade level, we are seeing overall that we are moving in the right direction and moving towards that 5% increase specifically for ELA. And I'm happy to now have the team share with you the data on math.
Thanks, Superintendent. I know that, Director Shinosky, do you have your hand up? Yeah, Director Shinosky has her hand up. I have a couple of questions. Director Chang, do you have any more questions? Okay, so we'll keep them brief, but, you know, I'm going to just jump in and then I'll call on you, Director Shinosky. Thanks for raising your hand, I see you. I really appreciated the calling out of different focal populations that we hadn't seen before. So I like the disaggregated data for our AAPI students and really appreciated seeing the data for Pacific Islanders in particular. And so I, you know, I look at that data and I see growth areas still that we have to address for our Pacific Islanders, EL students, and our special education students that are still concerning to me. Thank you, Director Albeck, for pointing out the literacy actions and the work that we're doing internally. But externally, and as we think of, you know, our new literacy curriculum and the work that's coming up in the spring, do we have a focus group set up to engage with parents of Pacific Islanders, ELs, and sped families in particular to see, you know, what we could do to improve literacy scores for those student populations? Yeah.
We've held focal groups for Black African-American families, Latinx and multilingual learner families, and families of students with special needs. And we have not yet had one for families of Pacific Islander students, but it is something that we can look forward to doing.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I appreciate the disaggregated data, but would love to learn how we can better support our Pacific Islanders, given what was presented tonight. And Director Shinosky, I'll turn it over to you for your questions, and then we'll move over to math, Superintendent.
Yeah, I more just have a comment. The data's really hard to understand for me. I mean, and some of it, I think, is like the statistics of small numbers. And so looking at all of this, I'm really excited to hear during the previous questions and answers that we're trying to figure out why the numbers look the way that they look. And I hope that we have a plan for really targeting that and assessing that because I think it's really hard to know why a particular classroom has particular outcomes with only, you know, 20, 25 students in it. So I just hope that we have a clear plan for how we're going to really dig into that and so that we're not just continuing to try and chase down better numbers without, you know, achieving those results. And I also just want to, you know, really shout out the improvements because I think that we often get bogged down in what we're not doing, and I think that our educators are clearly working hard and trying to make change, and really, we're seeing results. And that is shown by, you know, the improvements we see this year over last year, and then also in comparison with neighboring districts. So I just want to give some gratitude for all of our teachers, all of our staff, all of our administrators for that hard work and good work. So thanks.
Anything else before we move forward? All right, so we will go ahead and transition to our data presentation on mathematics. Next slide, please. So the first slide that you see here is at the elementary level. As you see, we continue to see year-over-year progress in the amount of students that perform proficient on the Math SBA assessment. Very good news. Year-over-year, since last year, we made 4% growth in proficiency at the elementary level, and over two years, we've seen 8% growth at the elementary level since the year 21, 22. And the specific grade levels that you see in front of you have followed a similar pattern. So overall growth over the last two years at the elementary level, positive trend. Next slide, please. The slide before you is for BUSD secondary schools. We continue to see similar growth in proficiency rates as well. Secondary student proficiency rose by 4% from 22, 23 to 23, 24. We continue to, we observe nonlinear trends at what I call the transition grades, those ones coming in and out of middle school and then in and out of high school. So definitely some learnings to do there. But overall, we have also seen an 8% increase in proficiency over the last two years at our secondary schools. Next slide, please. Returning to our three-by-five target as we transition to discussing our focal groups. Next slide, please. The slide before you breaks down math proficiency rates by racial and ethnic subgroups from 2021 all the way to 2024, showing overall positive trends. The districts saw an overall proficiency increase of 4% with African-American students improving by 6% and Latinx students by 2%. The multi-ethnic group improved by 4%, while American Indian, Alaskan Native, Filipino, Native Hawaiian, or Pacific Islander students saw the largest increase at 7%. White students also improved at a 3% gain. Similar to English Language Arts, we encouraged by the progress that we have made, and we continue to acknowledge and continue to work towards disrupting patterns of predictability and the inequable outcomes that we see represented in our data. Next slide, please. This slide highlights the math proficiency improvements by program from 22, 23 to 23, 24. We see a district-wide increase of 4% overall. Socio-economically disadvantaged students showed a 6% gain, while students receiving special education services improved by 2%. Notably, students experiencing homelessness saw the largest increase with a 10% rise in proficiency. Next slide, please. Overall, BUSD's Black African-American students proficiency rates rose by 6% year-over-year, meeting our new LCAP's three-by-five target. One of the efforts that we can attribute this to, not the only effort, but one of the efforts, is BUSD's continuous improvement monitoring of significant disproportionality, also called SIM for Sigus work, which continues to focus on the improved proficiency of Black African-American students through student-specific individual learning plans around math goals. Although we have significant work to do to close the opportunity gap within math education, we are excited by some of the work that is taking place this year around aligning math professional learning, which we can highlight later. Next slide, please. Overall, BUSD's Hispanic-Latinx student proficiency increased by 2% from 46% to 48%. Significant growth can be seen in third, fifth, and seventh grades with increases of 10% each. However, declines are noted in fourth with an 8% drop. As BUSD works to replicate assessment and progress monitoring systems developed through our Literacy Action Plan, we are taking lessons learned from that work to develop MTSS math practices, specifically as it relates to identifying diagnostic assessments and intervention practices for students with unfinished math learning, ensuring that all students, including Hispanic-Latinx students, receive the support they need to achieve at high levels. Next slide, please. Overall, BUSD students with IAPs, we have an overall increase of 2% in proficiency, rising from 23% to 25%. Notable improvements are evident at the third and seventh grades with gains of 10% and 11%, respectively. These results align with our theory of change, emphasizing the importance of collaborative structures between general education and special education teachers. This collaborative approach is designed to provide more cohesive and inclusive Tier One instruction. Moving forward, we aim to strengthen targeted interventions and professional development for both our general education and our special education specialists, ensuring consistent support and more integrated practices to enhance outcomes for all of our students with IAPs. Next slide, please. For our students identified as socio-economically disadvantaged, BUSD had an overall increase of 6% in proficiency, rising from 33% to 39% in 2023, 24. Notable growth is seen across multiple grade levels, particularly in the middle school level, where two out of three grade levels met our three-by-five target. By building a more aligned intervention model and improving support structures across all three schools at our middle school level, we've been able to make positive progress. As we move forward, we continue to strengthen these efforts, focusing on consistent Tier One instructional practices aligned with the new California math framework, ensuring that all students, especially those who have been, who are socio-economically disadvantaged, receive the support they need to achieve at levels. Next slide, please. This slide details the year-over-year math growth for our multilingual learners with an overall proficiency rate holding steady at 18% overall. Notable improvements include a 15% increase at sixth grade with a 6% gain in fifth grade, indicating positive growth in certain areas. However, we see significant declines in the fourth grade with a 17% drop, which raises curiosity about the underlying factors affecting progress for this group. In recent years, we've seen consistent gains among our multilingual learners, making this year's growth a point of reflection. This aligns with our continuous improvement approach, prompting us to analyze not only the factors affecting this subgroup, but also to extend our reflections to other groups where progress has been limited. Looking ahead, the Meeting of the Math Minds Initiative will play a crucial role in this analysis by fostering collaboration among educators, families, and other stakeholders. This initiative aims to identify and address instructional gaps, refine strategies, and better support all subgroups, including our multilingual learners. Next slide, please. This slide presents year-over-year math growth for Hispanic-Latinx multilingual learners. The overall increase in proficiency is minimal at 1% from 13% in 22, 23 to 14% in 23, 24. Notable growth occurred in third grade with 11% gain, however, there was a 7% decline in fifth grade, which highlights an area for further support in developing our integrated ELD practices throughout BUSD. Next slide, please. Similar to English Language Arts, we are seeing improvement in achievement of our younger students who experience housing insecurity. As stated earlier, we believe our Student Services Department and the work through our attendance efforts have been one element that support this growth. We know that when we have students that are coming to school regularly, we can support them and get them to achieve at a high levels. Now we will pass it back to Director Sweeney to discuss school bright spots.
Thank you. As a learning organization, we continuously listen and reflect upon the changes we are making and how they are contributing to progress, and also how they relate to our three-by-five target. In looking at our growth in math, we revisited our instructional strategies as related to mathematics. Here are some of the bright spots and some of the potential reasons for the why.
That was cool. What was cool?
What happened? Well, the John Muir, when we talk about the math specialist being in the instruction class, which would be like Tier One instruction, four times a week for 30 minutes, so you're moving out, you're moving away from pulling them out where they're missing to incorporating them in where they can help more children. Is that what?
That's correct, yes.
See, that's a good model. Now we got something. That's why we like the evaluation part. Is that part of why they are one of our Blue Ribbon Schools?
That is one of many reasons that John Muir made the gains that they made and is acknowledged as a Blue Ribbon School, yes.
I think that was, go ahead.
Are we pausing for questions?
So that concludes our section on mathematics.
So following mathematics, we have four slides for science. We are happy, again, to do whatever you all choose, either to stop and talk about math or to continue on with science and then do math and science together.
I would take continue on with science. Let's do both, math and science together.
So next slide. Oh, we're going to, yeah, this one, this slide. The CAST California Science Test is a state assessment administered to evaluate students' understanding and proficiency in science. It is designed for students in grades five, eight, and high school, typically administered in grade 11, as was mentioned earlier, and aligns with the California Next Generation Science Standards. We are introducing this dataset and are excited to discuss our CAST data as clearly, along with math and reading, science is essential. We will expect to see this information on the dashboard, the CDE dashboard. And as we turn our attention to the LCAP for the next school year, we will need to add a measure related to our science data. Next slide. We are building, we are building practices that can lead to improvement across subject areas, including science. Regular and cohesive collaboration, use of data to drive instruction, study of research and standards are contributing to some progress. As we see, we have a 5% total growth in CAST scores, with growth in fifth grade and high school and a slight decrease for our eighth-grade students. Next slide. And while we see 5% growth overall, and we see and recognize some growth in our focal groups, we continue to see significant areas of need for our focal groups. Next slide. Similar to what we observed on the previous slide, when looking overall at overall focal programs, we see some growth from last year. We have a 2% growth for our students in special education, 7% growth for socio-economically disadvantaged students, and a 6% growth for our students experiencing homelessness. However, we continue to recognize unfinished learning for our program groups in the area of science. And that concludes this section.
Directors, do we have any questions? Vice President Brown.
Yeah, a couple of comments. Will you all just turn that frown upside down? So I'm really happy to hear about some of the bright spots that you all shared, specifically as it relates to math and, and for science. You all know that the science test is a newer test as it relates to ELA and math. And so, of course, there are going to be areas of growth, but to see the areas that we're succeeding in is really, really great and exciting and absolutely makes me happy. If you could go back to, I believe it's 46? Oh, no. Yes. So the places where we have data that's not reportable, is that because we? What is the reason for that? I know it's coming from the state level, but what, what's the specific reason?
Those are data that were, that are not reportable publicly because of either the size of the population or the bands that they're scoring in. And so it would, it would lead to potential identification of a student. So we are looking at those numbers internally, but not sharing them publicly in order to protect.
The student population, okay. Thank you.
On this slide, would that also infer that many of these students have been reclassified out of the English Language Multilingual Learner Program? And that's why the numbers are declining?
No. So for the multilingual learners, and we should have put EL there because that's how they're identified on the state reports, these are not our re-designated students. So that is coming up as one of the learning questions. How are we looking at our Spanish-speaking English learners who have also been re-designated? And are we seeing, what is it that we're seeing between students who have re-designated versus those who haven't? Long-term English learners versus the earlier grades? So that's definitely an area that we're going to be looking at.
Thank you. And if you could go ahead to slide 50? For the next one? Yes. Or 49, I'm sorry. The bright spots.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, excuse me. Thank you. So to Director Babett's point, so excited about what's happening at John Muir, especially with the specialists being able to come into the classroom four times a week, giving the intervention that is absolutely necessary and needed is, is great. And I think the question that I was asking earlier is what, what direct support do we need? And so this may be a place where we need to continue this direct support. And so how many math specialists do we have in the district? What is our capacity to, if not do this in every classroom or at every school, increase what we are doing? And I'm asking really from a budgetary perspective, because when we think about our budget and we think about ways that we've made gains and the recommendations that we're supposed to make from the DIAS, this directly informs that. And so how many specialists do we have? And what capacity do we have to continue this push-in support rather than pull out?
Sure, I can take this one. So a few different things. It's about resources, right? But it's also about instructional vision and master schedule. So those are some big implications as well. So to answer your questions directly, what specialists are we talking about? We're talking about our literacy coaches. We're talking about our RTI coaches. We're talking about our ELD coordinators. And we're also talking about our case managers, all supporting students either at the Tier One or the Tier Two level. And what this looks like is, this looks like an intervention block that is happening purposefully at a specific time of the day, where we're doing, let me go like a flooding model, where it's intensive intervention of many specialists with our students that have unfinished learning. So in regards to the resource allocation that we support from the DIAS, I feel very grateful to work in BUSD for all the funding that we have, either through BSEP and through all the other funding sources, which allow our schools to have these amazing resources. And then for us as a district with your support, it's around, how do we, how do we reimagine what can potentially be different structures within the school setting? And how can we encourage and support our site leaders to be those instructional leaders to make those changes? Because we know no change is easy. And we know that if we're asking folks to do things a little bit different than they've done for many years, potentially there's some resistance. But at the end of the day, we have to make decisions that are best for kids. And if we see subgroups like this at John Muir, Black African-American students that are increasing 25% in one year, that leads us to, you know, reflect back to our, our theory of change. And one of our, one of our elements is reflection, and that's a big reflection point.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree with you more. And how many, in terms of my question, how many math specialists do we have? I heard you mention all of our intervention team who's working with our students, specifically as it relates to the math data we're looking at. How many math specialists do we have? Or interventionists?
We have RTI coaches at each site. Some sites have math coaches. Some sites do not have math coaches. And then I think that is really, there's some site discussion there.
Maybe you can give the number to me later?
We will, we will give the number to you later. And I anticipate that there are other questions. I do want to just call out directors for your benefit as well as the benefit of the audience. And out of respect for the hard work that's happening at our sites, that we, again, started with our theory of action because we wanted to really kind of set the stage for what we've been doing and what we think is important or necessary to drive change and improvement. And if you look at these bright spot slides, both the math ones and the ELA, again, wanting to reiterate that we've only put a couple, and even the things that we put on these slides do not reflect the entirety of what those schools are doing that might have led to the, to the improvements or the progress. That said, all of these bright, I'm sorry, all of these strategies directly align to the theory of action. And we could draw that connection for you all more explicitly at a later date. But I do want to give an example of Malcolm X, for example, for ELA. They also were listed as a bright spot specifically with their African-American students and called out targeted small group instruction. And then the example that you all just gave, John Muir with their, you know, push-in intervention, if you will, as well as their collaboration. And so when we talked about the studying piece, we're really trying to understand not like, oh, is it about push-in intervention? I think there's been enough research that says that going into the classroom is better than pulling students out, specifically depending on what you are trying to achieve. There's also tons of research per our theory of action that talks about the importance of collaboration. The study piece that we talk about, while we say we just, we can't just give you the immediate answer, is actually more nuanced than that. It's what's happening in that collaboration. It is what are the things those teachers are talking about? What kind of questions are they asking when they're planning? What are the things that they're considering? Are they coming back looking at student samples for, student work samples as an example? Similarly, when we talk about the push-in model that you highlighted for John Muir, it's not just about do we have interventionists or other people going into the classroom? It's again, what are they doing when they're in the classroom? What are they focused on? How are they working directly with the classroom teacher, et cetera? So again, I want to say and celebrate the work that's happening at our school sites. And all of that work, the work that's led to improvements, definitely directly aligns to our theory of action. Our learning is what are those little tiny distinctions? Those little small change actions that we can learn from and then replicate and scale? And not until we have another year or so, or some really intentional time to look at and study and do those observations and feedbacks, we'll be able to answer those questions. We could have 20 specialists and we could push everybody in, and you still will not get the exact same results, even the same levels of increase, unless you understand what it is that you're doing differently when you go into those classrooms, as an example.
I absolutely appreciate and agree with you, Superintendent Formarthel. And I remember years ago, not that long ago, but Director Alback, when you were the principal of Willard, you all made some major gains in math that were just so exciting. And so what we did as a board is we invited you all to present to the community, I'm sure you remember this, but to present to the community about what changed and what did you all do so that it could be a model for the district? And so I know that there are so many different reasons why we see gains or we don't see gains, you know, so on and so forth. But maybe we need to bring, bring those equity moments or the equity showcases back because I'd love to just sit down and hear from John Muir, or hear from Washington, or hear from Longfellow directly about the things that they're doing because we're excited and it's wonderful and it's great and we want to keep it going. And so not just highlight them and celebrate them for their, for the great things that they're doing, but also learn from them, knowing that we are a school district that will collaborate, that will really leverage a lot from collaboration. And so, thank you.
Can I just add on this slide?
Yes.
While we're on this slide? And also to Vice President Brown's point, as a board, how, how can we use this to kind of direct vision and policy to help the expansion? Because what I've seen in BUSD, a lot of times is, once we get the best practices out there, then somehow it gets shut down, even though it was working. And this is just what has happened in the past. And so, and I know in a lot of schools and a lot of different classrooms, people don't even want to share what they're doing when it's working because the district will then come in and not support it, right? For, for other reasons of tensions that happen throughout all of our schools. So I just also want to know how we as a board can use these best practices and also make it a direction, a policy. This is what we do to support your work as a superintendent. Like where do we fit in to help roll out these best practices beyond just making sure that the resources are there, but really giving that directive? And so when I look at Washington SED, for example, on this slide, like this bright spot sounds like what we've been saying for all of our schools to do. So I'm just wondering why here it's so different to, to drive a 16% increase? Because this should be the model at every school, for example.
I think, I mean, but I think that that, that is what we're saying, is that when we were talking about our theory of action and specifically calling out being part of a data-informed, data-driven district, coupled with a mindset around continuous improvement, there are practices and systems and structures that we need to have in place across the board. And so what's been happening over the course of the last two years is building into these data routines around our screening assessment windows to do that work. What we know in any change management process is that doesn't necessarily happen as consistently at the beginning, right? Because we've got to get to a place where we are, what is the, we got a nice little, a nice little message from our core learners. We have to teach it, support it, and then expect it, right? And so we're now hitting the stage where particularly around our data routines, we are getting to a stage of being able to expect it and we recognize that there's some additional work that's happening, particularly in regard to our literacy work. So Director Babett, you are correct. These are the, the systems and processes that we want to see across all of our schools. We need to see them happening consistently. So we're now in a space where we're able to ask, like, are these things happening? How often are they happening? And then how well are they happening, right? And that's, you've got to be methodical and intentional about studying across all, across that process.
Thank you very much. I just had a, just a couple of quick comments. I do want to echo what my colleague said, the excitement for seeing all the positive work that's happening. And I know it's just a snapshot of some of the sites. I like that Vice President Brown called out Willard. A lot of the excellent math work continues, even though you're not there. Under Principal Billitt, I know that there's a, there's a math, strong math culture and a strong Makerspace culture at the school that still continues. And Willard participates in math counts and all these great different activities that makes that community continue to go strong. In terms of tutoring sessions, because I know there's stuff that we do inside, during the school day and stuff that we do after the school day. I'm curious, and this comes from feedback that I had heard at a Club de Padres meeting when, under Principal Furlan, when he was principal of Longfellow. I know that for Latinx families there, and I know that there has to be consistency across sites. But for that particular site, I remember tutoring being brought up in that venue. And I'm curious, right? Do you feel like certain interventions work better at different sites? Like I know that that was a direct request from that particular group and from Latinx parents at Longfellow, and I'm glad to see the positive results here. But do you know if, if that is something unique to Longfellow because of that engagement with Principal Furlan and the Club de Padres? And would that work in other sites? Like how do you, in terms of cost-effectiveness, right? As the board enters a period where we're going to have to make tough decisions and budget cuts, could we get information in a different, maybe email to the board about, you know, just understanding the cost of like, you know, having specialists inside during math instruction versus tutoring? And what works better for which community and maybe for which age group too? Director Chang?
Thank you. Just really quickly, these are really positive data points and numbers. And I want to make sure that I note my kudos and appreciation for the hard work that's going on with this team and across the district. And for myself, as a governance person, reflecting the comments of both Director Brown and also Director Shnaski, but all directors here, it's sitting from up here, like from a governance perspective, having the data is really important. And also having some type of exposure to the type of qualitative approaches. Is it the theory of practice? Is that the term? Theory of practice? You know, there's obviously a qualitative aspect to this too that can't be captured in just the data points. And in another school year, we'll have three years. We'll have more longitudinal, at some point we'll have like four or five years, and that'll be really helpful. But I also support Director Brown's suggestion to have folks who have had these improvements come, come to the board and speak to us and educate us on, on these type of theories of practice or pedagogical practices that are, that are so effective in class. Thank you.
Great. I don't see Director Shnaski's hand up, but do directors have additional questions before we move on? I did, I asked her. Oh, now her hand is up. Hi, Director Shnaski, you can go. See you now.
I, I guess I just feel compelled to make a comment as a teacher. You know, different things also work for different teachers in different ways. And so the notion, I, I'm just troubled by the notion of mandating certain things. It's like teaching is a skill and it's also an art. And so I think we also have to figure out a lot about culture and a lot about, you know, what we can do to support our educators to make sure that they are doing what is best. best for them for serving the kids in their classrooms.
Can I ask, I may have missed it, Director Shnaski, but what mandated instructional changes do we make? I just want to make sure I have it in my notes because I don't remember that.
I'm not sure. I was responding to some other comments that were made.
Thanks, Director Shnaski. Are there any further questions, Vice President Brown?
Can I piggyback on that? Director Shnaski, I was really referring to best practices. And I don't think what's best for them is necessarily the same as the best practice. And there could be a marrying of the minds there, but we really do have to think about what are best practices that get the results for kids and ask for that kind of improvement and support it, like they said, teach it, support it, and then expect it. That's what I was thinking, if that's what you're referring to.
Vice President Brown?
Yes, I wanted to ask a question about what you were mentioning earlier, Associate Superintendent Hogan-Dyke, from the teach it, support it, and then expect it model. That I'm sure also includes the designated PD time that you were mentioning earlier when you, when you said that some of our areas for growth that will impact our theory of change is really that, the need for designated PD time. So currently, could you just share what our capacity is for, what we have for designated PD time and our vision to include more opportunities for PD? Who's providing those trainings for our educators from you all's office? Do you all provide expectations for outcomes? Just if you could share, shed a little light on that, please.
I'm actually going to turn this over to Director Albeck because he and his team really led the professional development. So for folks in the public to know, BUSD supports two and a half professional development days that are not classroom teaching days. One before school starts and then two during the course of the school year. We've been making some shifts to also utilize the Wednesday release time and recognizing where we've got capacity with both our teachers on special assignment and our literacy coaches, RTI folks, to help us with that work. But in terms of how we're setting expectations and alignment, that's a lot of the work that our curriculum and instruction department have been, have been doing. So I do want to acknowledge those efforts.
And then just briefly, so we have the site discretion Wednesday PD for K-8, and then our high school uses Monday mornings, so that's around a two-hour block that our instructional leaders work with their teacher leadership teams on determining. It's a joint agreement between the teacher leaders and the instructional leader or the site administrator on determining the best use of that time. And I think, and then in addition to that, we have then the district mandated PD, which is the two day-long PD days, the October one, or also one this day before school starts, and then the January one. And then at the middle school level, we also have middle school collaboration structures where five times a year, all the middle schools come together in professional learning communities to focus on the areas of practice. But the one thing that I'll say about this, and I think what has led to some of the growth that we've seen, is again, getting to our theory of action, which is really around alignment. Before this, I would say sometimes what's happening at the sites on the Wednesdays or BHS on the Mondays wasn't necessarily the same practices or the same focus that was happening on the district on those PD days, right? And that provided a lot of mixed messages for our teachers. And one thing that I hope you are hearing is literacy continues to be a focus and will be a focus in our district. And this year specifically, our site PDs on the Wednesdays, which is around the diagnostic work that Coordinator James was speaking about, and then our PD days, our district by PD days have also been focused on the literacy practice. So we're sort of beating a common drum that provides some consistency for educators because we also know sometimes education is flavor of the month and what's happening next this year. And it's, you know, for our teachers, sometimes that can be challenging. But I think we're in year three of an administration that is supporting very consistent learning. And I think for our educators, it's starting to pay off. And even folks that potentially, you know, we're waiting it out, there's no more waiting it out, and this is sort of the direction that we're going. Of course, we are learning it, we are now expecting it and monitoring it and supporting it. So that's sort of the structures that leads to it, but there's more than just the structure, if that makes sense, Vice President Brown.
Yes, that does make sense. And so great to hear because I know that you all always update us every time you all have that summer PD. I was excited about what I've heard in the past years in terms of the focused areas on abolitionist teaching and Goldie Muhammad's work. And so those things are really exciting and great, and how do we align? Because vertical alignment is so important, right? And so how do we align and how are we saying the same messages in summer PD that we're saying in October PD, in those Wednesday sessions, in those Monday sessions? And so it's sounding like you all are continuing to move in that direction. And so that's the only update that I wanted to hear. So that's great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Superintendent, we still have the closing next step slides, right?
I'm going to bring it home real quick. Can I, I just have a couple more questions.
Oh.
So to what she was saying, though, how do we make sure that new people, like new principals, new teachers, new educators, get this training that we did a year before in a year? Like what is the onboarding plan for new educators into our system?
Yep. So that's going to be work that's going to be ongoing. We're going to need, we're going to need to be able to think about, the core training was about 22 hours of training over the course of the school year. That's what we got last year. We do have specific and designated time to align those practices at our new teacher orientation as a starting place. But we are going to be getting to a place where we're going to be needing to think about these PD times and how we're going to differentiate the learning, depending on where folks are in the system. I mean, in terms of what they know and are able to do.
Other part that I would add to that, again, getting to the resources and opportunities that we do have in our district. We often rely on our coaches to support the new folks that are, that are coming in. So for a new middle school English teacher, then our literacy coach, our coach spends time with them, walking them through inquiry by design, through the curriculum and, you know, what it entails. And the one part that I'll go further specific on, Director Babett, is specifically as we're thinking about this new elementary literacy curriculum, as we're working with publishers and as we're projecting out financial impacts, as we're talking about, it's not only the cost of what year one is, because we know we're going to have new teachers on year two and year three. It's around what was that, what will that ongoing support look like to make sure that no matter where a teacher comes into our system, they're getting, I would say, the fidelity of what the curriculum or the instruction is supposed to be? Because sometimes when the train, train one and the trainer trains another one, some things get lost in translation. So we're just really thinking about long-term training for folks, specifically as it relates to that curriculum.
All right.
Lastly. Just one more, one more. When you talk about the meeting of the minds for math, I was really also curious as to how the community can also be involved in our updates to math and meeting of the minds and just really how can it be more collaborative with the community?
So the meeting of the math minds is a collaborative process. It is not only site leaders and math teacher leaders, but it is also community members. So what we did in the spring is we sent out a survey throughout all of our e-trees to families to invite them to be a part of the math minds. And currently on our math minds, we have several families at each grade level, the K-5 level, the 6-8 level, and also the high school level. So in the meeting of the math minds, it, I think you said a different, another M, I like that one, marriage or myriad of math minds. Regardless, it's M cubed, not M3, math lingo. But we do have community members. We also have educational partners, which are not BUSD. So we have folks from math agencies, there's folks from Lawrence, at Lawrence-Holloway-Berkley and some other math folks around the regional network. So it really is a collaboration. We were not able to take every single family that said, hey, I want to be a part of this. But one other intentions of ours is through the curriculum instruction website, we are going to be, we are linking all of the information. So it's an open, you know, what we do in there is a transparent process. So when somebody wants to go in there and say, what's this meeting of the math minds? What are they doing? I wasn't necessarily a part of it. And they can see the notes, there's contact information, so on and so forth.
You said lastly, so. Superintendent. Pause, pause. I'm going to go, yeah. So just in closing, we wanted to make sure that we gave a couple of highlights and then just wrap this up. So at the state level, what's important to know is that the growth reports will be coming soon. Now that we have three years of consecutive data, the state will be able to produce those reports, and those will be up on the dashboard, along with a return to the full color dials on the California dashboard that we're anticipating will be released in December. And that will release, will also include science on the dashboard for the first time. We want to close out in this, in, with a slide on our continuous improvement model for improvement, because I think a lot of the conversation that we've been having today is really honing in on these improvement questions. In everything that we're doing, we really are asking ourselves, what is it that we're trying to improve? What changes or actions are we taking and why? And then how would we know that change led to improvement? So those are those reflective questions that we are using across the organization as we engage in what we call PDSA cycles, or plan, do, study, and act. We're really at the big picture level in the study stage of this process as a district. We are, we're seeing some results, we know that we've tried some things, but we're trying to figure out, you know, do we do the things that we said we were going to do? How do we know? And that study part is really important because what we're learning, even in these bright spots, is that there are, there's a lot of context, there is a lot of culture that we need to understand about individual schools that are getting, that are moving in and getting to those results. That study part is critical. It is really easy to say do, 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 but that's not going to lead us to be that learning organization so that we can get to predictable results, right? We engage in continuous improvement cycles because we do want to identify what are the, what are the actions that we take under what conditions that can then be sustained, that result in consistent results, that we can then predict over time. And we're not in that place yet, but that's where we're headed. And that's why this continuous improvement mindset in a data-driven culture is critically important to the work. We want to move from a place where we're looking at bright spots to where we're looking at constellations, right? Where we can say that if we are doing these things, then we can reasonably expect that there will be results and that we can see that in multiple places, right? So bright spots are easy to look at, constellations are a little harder. So we're aiming for the constellation in the work that we're doing in Berkeley. We do want to make our public service announcement, and our superintendent mentioned this earlier, we have our district and school newsletters that are posted on the district website. There is a grade span newsletter for elementary, middle, and high school that is posted on the Brea website. And there's information in the appendix for how to access individual, individual school level reports on the individual school website pages. And then just to close out again, was we are working on our emerging strategic plan with these five pillars, we are looking for alignment as we're thinking about what are we learning from our various other plans and initiatives? And how do we consolidate that? It is what we are learning. It's really difficult. Across these plans, we have nearly 200 actions. It's really difficult as an organization to then pinpoint what's the one or two or handful of things that we're doing that are getting results. So in the context of the strategic plan, we are going to be identifying a more narrow set of priorities that will then better help us refine our continuous improvement cycles as we're learning what is working to accelerate outcomes for our student population. And that, that's the, thank you.
Well, thank you so much for this great presentation. And I do also want to thank my colleagues for a great discussion. So thank you. Great. See, I told you we'd be excited about this. All right. The next and our last item, colleagues, is item 14.1, the Oxford surplus recommendation. Now, this is an action item. That Assistant Superintendent Kalis.
We'll try to make this relatively quick. We've done a lot of work on this with you guys before, and what we're coming back today for is really the next step of action. With me tonight is Jennifer Gibb from Van Pelt Construction Services. She's one of our consultants, and she's been here before on this. See? I know, never works for me. So what we're going to talk about tonight is really the next step on the surplus of the Oxford property at 11:30 Oxford Street. The board did accept the 7-11's committee's recommendation a while back, and I have a timeline in here, to declare it a surplus. And at the last time we met and discussed this, we had direction from the board to proceed with the priority offering. The priority offering is required under the California statute, and that's where we did offer it to state and local agencies as well as nonprofits. This included the county, along with the city of Berkeley. The priority offering was sent out to all agencies, and there was no interest expressed by any of those agencies in purchasing or acquiring that through a land swap or other So the sale of the property, priority offerings is done. So really, the next step now is to go to public offering, and that's the direction that we're seeking from the board tonight. The public offering is, can only proceed if the priority offering is, there's no interest, which there was not. And Jennifer, if you want to jump in at any point, please feel free. So we do have a timeline there, which shows that in April of '24 was when this really began as far as the approval of the surplus, and that moves us to now. So our next steps is really to move to a public offering. So the board has already determined disposition methods and provided direction. We've issued the priority offering. So really, the next step is to move to a public offering, and then from there, the board can evaluate offers and negotiate, can also give potential buyers the opportunity to complete due diligence and then finalize a transaction. Something I want to stress on is just since we moved to public offering, the board is not required to accept the deal that it gets, right? That was something that I know this board did express concern with in the past. So we are not required to do that as the school district, and the board doesn't have to authorize it. Additionally, we don't have to list it with a price. We can list it publicly using a real estate agency, using a couple of developing agencies, et cetera. And depending upon what we see, we can also do a public bidding process as well and allow, you know, we want to go through the Realtor first so that we have it properly marketed, but then from there, we can open up an auction on the property and see what offers the district gets, and then the district can evaluate those at that point in time. So this just explains those two processes and how that would look moving through it. And again, I told you I would try to be quick. So at this point, we'll move to any discussion or questions that the board might have, and then from there, hopefully gain direction and action.
Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Can, just for the community's sake, can you just list out who the priority offerings are? I know you said public and nonprofit, but some people might not understand that means the city or, you know?
Yeah, so it's actually quite an extensive list. I don't have the list with me, but it's all local city, county, state, and government, federal government agencies, as well as certain nonprofits. So not every nonprofit agency has the right to participate in a priority So not every nonprofit agency has the right to participate in a priority offering, but legal actually drew up the list, and it was quite extensive. And the offering went out to all of those. So you may recall from the last board meeting, when the board authorized doing the priority offering, there was an opportunity under a Senate bill that was sunsetting, and we were able to get in under that, where we sent the priority offering to all of those agencies at the same time. Otherwise, we would have had to sort of check off the box, starting with city and then county and state, and the priority offering period would have taken much longer. This allows the board to move a little bit more quickly in the sense of rather than sitting on the property, because we've discussed it, you know, in the past, just what a liability it's become for the district and a cost.
And do we do any personal outreach to any of these organizations? I mean, it just seems odd that nobody had any interest.
So, no, the way this, the way the statute reads is that it just does get sent out, and it got sent out via regular USPS as well as email notifications to all of those agencies. But no, there's not personal outreach that happens.
Okay. And then under the offers, the offers that we get, will they also include what they want to do with the property next?
Yes. So, and we can also structure the deal that, you know, it's, you know, basically, where we can structure the offering in such a way that it's, you know, submit your price as well as your intended land use, right? They have to understand what the zoning is and the process that they would have to go to, to potentially rezone the property if they chose to do so, or repurpose the property in a different way. But really, the board can sort of help direct and say, well, we want to know not only what your price is, but what your intended use is. Is that?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then how can we make sure that the community is also aware of that? Because ultimately, we, we are here to represent the entire community and their tax dollars and, you know, what they would like to have also. So once we get the offers with their intended use, is there a community engagement process for what we accept, or how would we go about that?
That's really at the will of the board, right? If, if the board wants to do a community engagement process after considering the options that come in, absolutely.
Colleagues, any additional questions?
Can we stay right there for a second? Is that the direction that you're providing, Director Babett? I'd be happy to support that if it is.
Yes, that's what I would like.
So this is for action. So do you have a motion, Director Babett? What's your motion?
Yes, I will move to approve putting this up for public sale? Public sale.
I'll second the motion.
Director Kalis?
If I may, so is it, is the motion to just approve to move it for public sale or move it for public sale and then consider public outreach after that as far as like a community forum?
Yes, based on the offers that we receive and the intent, I would like for that to be included in the, in the offers. And then we can have a community engagement process.
Okay. But that's helpful so that we know when we talk to real estates and people who are gonna market this, basically what they need to include in that.
For the record, I second the amendment to the original motion made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And then Ms. Torres, can you call the roll for the vote?
Director Shnaski? Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Clark?
Yes.
Director Chang?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Bossev.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent Kalis. Now it's time for extended public comments. Let me see if there's anyone for public comment online. I don't see any hands online. Ms. Torres, is there anyone for a public comment here? Seeing no one for a public comment here. Directors, it's also now call for extended board member comments. Does, does anyone have extended board member comments?
I have a question.
No. Also, before I officially conclude the meeting, please look at the informational items on tonight's agenda. All right. Seeing no extended public comments, no extended board member comments, the meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education is hereby adjourned at 10:21 PM. Thank you, colleagues.